Good evening. Welcome to the Revere City Council meeting of August 23, 2021. All rise and salute the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk?
Roll call of the members, Councillor Janino.
Here.
Here, Councillor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councillor Keefe.
Here.
Here, Councillor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councillor Moravito.
Here.
Here, Councillor Novosowski.
Here.
Here, Councillor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councillor Rotundo. His absent Councillor Serino.
Here.
Here, Councillor Visconti.
Here.
Here, and Council President Zambudo.
Here.
Here, Quorum is present. Calendar item number two, approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of July 12, 2021.
So moved.
All in favor, all opposed, so are you?
Calendar item number three, a resolution of condolence will be offered by the City Council in honor of Margaret P. Peggy O'Hara Shanahan, the first woman to serve on the Revere City Council.
And appropriately, Jessica Janino.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to offer my deepest condolences to the O'Hara family during this most difficult time. Whereas former City Councilor Margaret P. O'Hara has rendered conspicuous and faithful and honorable public service to the citizens of Revere in her duties as City Councilor, and whereas the almighty God in his infinite wisdom has called former City Councilor Margaret P. O'Hara to her eternal reward, and whereas the sad calling from amidst a former City Councilor Margaret P. O'Hara leaves a vacancy in the official family of the city of Revere that will be difficult to fill in a memory that will be long cherished, therefore be it resolved that the members of this City Council extend to the family of former City Councilor Margaret P. O'Hara on behalf of its citizens of Revere our heartfelt sympathy and sincerest regrets on this profound loss. Be it further resolved that in recognition of former City Councilor Margaret P. O'Hara's service to the citizens of Revere, that the City Council pays its sincere tribute to her memory by spreading upon the official records of the city of Revere City Council a copy of this resolution of condolence. Ordered by the City Council on a roll call, Councillors Janino, Guanasso, Keefe, McKenna, Moravito, Novosowski, Powers, Serino, Rotundo, Visconti, and City Council President Tony Zambudo voting in the affirmative, approved by City Councilor Tony Zambudo, attested by the City Clerk Ashley Melnick, at this time I offer a moment of silence for former City Councilor Margaret, oh, sorry, O'Hara. Ash. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to call on Steve Moravito for a moment of personal privilege.
Melnick. Melnick. Thank you. Can I have everyone's attention? Last week, our community suffered a great loss. It was felt throughout the city, neighboring cities. There was a fatal accident in Winthrop, and we lost our resident, my friend Tina Anahosa. She overcomes some struggles and was on a great path to success. She was a yoga instructor. She was a kind person. Everyone who met her was able to connect with her, and she was so easy, her personality was gravitated toward everyone, that it made it easy to be her friend. You would know her for one, you would talk to her for five minutes and it felt like you knew her for years. And to find a person that was, that was so charismatic, anagentic, kind, like Tina, it's hard to find someone like that. So I can understand why we all suffered such a great loss and how, why everyone's in so much pain. On behalf of the City Council, I'd like to offer my, our condolences to the Anahosa family, the Palante family, and the Laria family. We all have heavy hearts and we can't express our sympathy enough. We're here for you, whatever you need, so if we can have a moment of silence, because Revere did lose a sweet soul.
Calendar item number four, National Grid, Verizon, RCN, and Comcast will address the City Council relative to ongoing utility work and double poles.
Mr. Cameron, it looks like you're representing everybody tonight.
Looks like I'm, looks like I'm flying solo.
You can handle it, we know that.
Just a quick summary, I do have a copy of the double pole report here. Take it off. Okay, okay. I do have a copy of the double pole report here. There's 145 right now in the city, let's see, 38 are with us, 39 are with Private Fiber, 29 are with RCN, and 21 with the fire department, and then there's a handful scattered between Verizon and Comcast. So we continue to make progress, you know, there are a lot of new poles being set, but a lot being removed at the same time. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I guess we open this up to councillors now. Councillor Guanasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dan, welcome. I just have a brief question. I appreciate the fact that we are removing so many poles and we're taking care of our business the way we ought to be doing it. I've got some requests from the Y3 people adjacent to Hastings Park, and they've asked of me if we could seek out to Verizon, the old poles that are being taken down, if we could dump some of them there, the city yard has informed me that they will cut them up and restore some of the poles that really need some work on down there. And I think we only need maybe five or six or seven, but if, when you have the old poles and they're cutting them away, dump them there, we'll cut them there, we don't need you to cut them, well, the DPW will cut them and we'll install them on Hastings Park. It's adjacent to the marsh.
Okay, I'll talk to Stan about that.
Yes, he's your colleague and you're in charge of everything tonight, so Dan, you're getting the responsibility of, you're wearing four hats tonight, and I, and I know you can handle it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thanks, thank you, Dan, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dan, I have two areas, they're not double poles, one is 73 Woodland Road in Oak Island, and that's a pole that was damaged by a motor vehicle several months ago, and I've mentioned this before, I called it into Engrid, and so I think this is probably the best way to get direct attention to it, through yourself, and that's a pole to me that looks like it, you know, could collapse, it's all banged to pieces. And I believe it also may be a little damp on the bottom with regard to deterioration. The other one is on Rice Avenue, and the Engrid was down there a couple of weeks ago with myself and the occupant of the house, and the problem there is, it's right in the middle of the sidewalk. Now, he wants to, he's building a new house, he wants to put in a brand-new concrete sidewalk, he can't do that until the pole is moved. The other problem is with that pole is it's right in the middle of a sidewalk, and as you know, there has to be a clearance for a woman with a baby carriage, a person that's handicapped with a walker or a wheelchair. With the situation the way it is now, they have to go out on the street onto Rice Ave, and that can cause a very, very dangerous situation for people that are in that position. So I think these are two primary areas that have to be dealt with rather quickly, I would hope. The other, there's a third one now, a third request that's not regarding poles, as you know, we're building a brand-new fire station down at the Point of Pines, and there's been a lot of comment about why it's taking so long, and that's not your fault, that's the fault of the pandemic, and we found environmental issues with regard to gasoline tanks inside the station, but that's all been corrected, so we don't, we don't worry about that now. We, now we're concerned, I understand Council President Zambudo did speak with someone today with regard to getting permission to cut that line, and all we need to do now is cut the gas line, and next week, we can have the contractor in there tearing that fire station down and getting ready to build a brand-new fire station for the people down there, which is long overdue, it's much needed. So I would ask you, if you could, to check tomorrow with whoever is responsible for shutting off that gas down there, and there might, I think there's an issue too, I believe, with DCR with regard to shutting it off, and these are all the little things that come into play that hold up construction of public safety and other buildings in the city. So I would hope that that would be addressed this week, the gas would be shut off, and I've talked to the deputy chief, and he tells me that once that's done, we can have a contractor down there dismantling that fire station so we can get back to providing good public safety for the residents of the city. Thank you.
Councillor, he's leading the charge, so you're in good hands.
Okay.
Yes, actually, Councillor Zambudo called me on that as well today. We were led to believe that it was a Mastioti roadway, that part of the linway, but it's actually DCR, so a little bit of confusion on who issues the permit. We spoke to the DCR today, they're going to expedite it, get us the permit this week, and we should be there beginning of next week disconnecting.
That's great news.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Councillor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know we spoke today and I gave you some of the streets, but I have one more.
Sure.
It's Bayview Street, it's off of Vinyl Street, the pole is in the middle of the street, it's not on the sidewalk, it's on the street.
Really?
Yeah, well, the sidewalk is, I'm trying to get the sidewalk fixed.
Okay.
But it is on the, it's on the street.
Is it double?
And it's a very short, there's only like maybe six houses on the street, but it's off of Vinyl.
Okay.
Okay, and just take a look at it, please.
Yep.
Thanks. Thank you for today, by the way.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Novosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through to Dan. Dan, I know we spoke the other day, fill a few things up, but some of the things came up today. I was talking to Matt Lally, and he has to, it's been over a year now since they've, haven't repaired the service sidewalk block squares, and still hot-topping there from when they did Walnut Ave, the lower part of Walnut Ave down to Kimball. So he said he'll do it as soon as possible, but we've been waiting for a long time for these to be fixed, so hopefully we can ask them to put a rush on it, please.
So I spoke to him this morning about that, and you asked, you actually had a couple of other locations as well, so he's responding, you know, his, he manages the contractor, so he will, he will expedite that on Walnut, and then there's another group in National Grid that handles the other ones you're looking for.
Right, so Walden Street, Sumner Street, Hitchborough.
In Highland.
In Highland, yeah.
Yeah.
So like to get those fixed, you know, we've just been waiting for so long for those block squares to be repaired, so hopefully we'll get those done soon.
Yeah, we like to come in and do a bunch of ones.
Before winter time.
Okay.
Please. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Serino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dan, thank you for being here tonight. So later in the meeting, I have a motion for adding streetlights, street lamps to three poles on Salem Street in North Revere at Sully's Curve, which is the curve right across from Overlook Ridge, the entrance to the Overlook Ridge, and you guys had added poles last summer. So I just want to add, I'm going to, I have in a request to, to add street lamps, so if we could get that done by the, you know.
Yep.
By the fall, late fall, early winter, that would be appreciated. Additionally, I haven't filed, but I will for the next meeting, to put street lamps on a couple of poles at Hall's Corner, at the corner of Malden Street and New Hall Street by Vinnie's Market, because that, that area is also kind of dark. And regarding the Salem Street ones, when they get done, could you put, I believe it's, is it 96?
If that's what you want, yes.
Yes, please.
We'll install it, what you want, there isn't 96 watt.
Yes, please, if we could do that, because there are no homes right there, so it would be, it would be good.
If you could just make that part of your order so when it comes through.
Sure.
You know, we'll get it right.
Absolutely, I'll make sure of that. Thank you, Dan.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Visconti.
Thank you. Hi, Dan, thanks for being here. I appreciate you being present, and unfortunately, you're the only one here, so it speaks volumes on the type of person you are, but I got a general question. You know, ultimately, we want the double poles to go away, right? And I know it's been an ongoing process, you stated that you had about 38 poles, double poles that you are, that you guys have, is that correct? I know there's 140.
Yeah, we have 38.
38, okay. Is there a timeframe that you think, a realistic timeframe, that you think you can drop that down, you know, even if you're cutting that down in half, you know, what's that timeframe going to be so we have some kind of idea in the progress being made?
Well, you know, the way the, you probably understand the way the process works with for us, and then, you know, the hierarchy goes all the way down to Verizon, they're last, so, yeah, we're always transferring, and once we transfer, then it moves over to the fire department, and then on to Comcast, Private Fiber, and then to Verizon. So, you know, that number, unfortunately, probably never will get to zero, because we're adding poles at the same time, you know.
Okay.
The poles that get hit, rotted, and so forth, so it is a moving target, and this, 38 is probably on the higher side of what's normally in our queue, so we'll see if we can, you know, keep that moving forward. But once we do, it just moves into everyone else's queue, and they have to do the same to keep it moving.
I understand.
Okay.
We just, we'd like to see them, you know, drop, we'd like to see that number drop, obviously, it's just an eyesore when you see it throughout the city, so, but I appreciate your help.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other councillors? Well, Dan, I thank you for coming up, and thank you for subbing for everybody else tonight, and I, for one, who was here when we got this. And I, for one, who was here when we got this program in place, am thrilled with the way it works. And we know it'll never be zero. But we are definitely, we're like a fine-tuned machine nowadays, the way it works. If everybody does their job, it gets done. So thank you for your efforts. Bye-bye.
Thanks, everybody.
Calendar item number five. The Revere City Council will award certificates of appreciation to the Momentum Athletic Club for their outstanding performances at the National Youth Outdoor Championships in Rome, Georgia.
We've got to bring in the stars here. Here we go. Well, welcome, everybody. I'm glad everybody is here tonight to say great things about this team. Now, this is the Moroccan athletic team. And they went to Rome, Georgia to participate in their Olympics. And with that, I can tell you that they came home with seven medals, Olympic medals. Coach Hussein and Samir, okay? And Yassir. Worked with these kids for months during COVID at Harry Delarussos Stadium. So Revere is their home base. And they all live in Revere. And we want to thank the coach and everybody that's part of the team for making this happen. So we have our certificates for them, special certificates for the kids that won their medals. You can see their medals hanging over their necks. And I'm going to read their names. And now I think we put part of the award on their certificate. Okay, good. So what I'm going to do, instead of reading each one, I'm going to mention the kid's name now and what medals they won. Okay, so first Sarah Blanco. Where's Sarah?
Sarah Blanco.
Now Sarah runs the 1,500-meter race and the 800-meter race. She won the gold medal in the 15 and a silver medal in the 800. So we congratulate her for that. And then we have Anwar Fatih, right here, Anwar. And Anwar, he's taller than me. And how old are you?
15.
13.
15.
15, 15, okay. And he runs the 880-meter. Now, is that a hurdle?
800.
No, 800, 400 and 800.
The 400 and the 800, okay.
Yes, but he will just win.
And he won one medal. He won a bronze medal in the 800. Now, Bilal? Bilal won a bronze medal in the 3,000-meter race. That, that's almost a steeplechase if everybody saw the Olympics. That's how long it is. And Rita? Den-Den? Rita, where are you? There we go. Okay. So short, I looked right over. He runs the 1,500-meter and won a bronze medal. And Noor?
Noor is the youngest one.
The youngest one, whoa. Runs the 800-meter and won a bronze medal. And there's Farouk.
Farouk is behind me.
Behind me.
There he is.
Here we go. Believe it or not, he does the short push.
All right.
And he won a bronze medal in that short push. What was your longest throw?
Six and a half meters.
Six and a half meters. That's about 20 feet, I guess. Now, the other members of the team include Lena Jamal, a 1,500-meter runner, right here. Ziad Den-Den. Who is? You won medals too?
No. This is the Bay State Games medal.
Oh, Bay State Games, okay. And Walid Fatih? Walid. He runs the 1,500-meter. And Yassir Blanco?
Yassir.
Yassir? Is that the brother? He runs two races, the 100-meter and the 200-meter. so you know the training that they have gone through to get to this point, thanks to the coaches and also to the parents for letting them get this far and do what they have to do to do their training. And a good example for training is right here. A black belt people from Revere Karate. They train and they train and they train. Like these kids train and they train and they train, and it pays off. So we congratulate everybody involved. And we're going to give each one a certificate to take home and be proud of. Anwar. There you go. Rita. Rita. There you go. Okay, moving right along. Farouk. There you go, my friend. And we got Sarah. Walid. He's behind me again, huh? Yassir Blanco. There you go. And Samir, the coach. We owe him that.
Thank you very much.
Did you have a, do you want to say something, a thank you?
Yes.
Okay, come.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much. My name is Samir Hossein. So I'm here in Revere like 20 years. So I established this club in 2010. So we go smoothly, step by step. And we get in here. So it's the first time to be in a national championship. It's not an easy step. We go by New England. We go by division. Then we go to the national. So this year was in Rome, Georgia. It was in Rome, Georgia. And we are proud. We went with 10, the total of the club is 32 kids, by the way. It's not just Moroccan, it's Algerian, you know what I'm saying? Moroccan, Algerian, all like North Africa. But welcome for everybody when it's a different ethnicity in our club. We're working to help the kids, the youth in this, in this area. I want to thank Mr. Counselor Ria. I want to thank the recreation center director. He helped us and opened the door for the stadium to have the workout over there. I want to thank everybody who helped these things happen to us to honor in this, in this chamber of Revere. Thank you very much.
I just, I just want everybody to know that Maqir, the organization that holds the Moroccan Cultural Festival last week, presented each one of these kids with a brand-new laptop. And it's not, not just the medal winners, every single one of the team. So, and I was, I was, I was glad to be present at the festival to help present the laptops to these kids. We're all proud of them and we congratulate them very much. Somebody want to come up close to take pictures? No, you all set? Oh, Jessica's here. Let me get, let me get in the back here. I don't want to hide the little ones. Get in front here. Get in front. Put the microphone down. Back to the regular hours of business. Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number six, public hearings. This is the joint hearing of the City Council and the Planning Board. Call is ordered on the application of the McClellan Highway Development Company, LLC, care of the H Y M Investment Group, LLC, 1 Congress Street, Boston, Mass., 02114, requesting an amendment to Title 17, the revised ordinances of the City of Revere relative to the Suffolk Downs Overlay District.
This is a public hearing. Proponents? People in favor?
Community Council President Zambudo and councilors, my name is Doug Mans. I'm a partner with the H Y M Investment Group. Very happy to be back here again tonight. Tom O'Brien sends his regards. He's actually out this week, so we want to keep this process going. But we gave you an update, I think about two months ago, six weeks ago?
Yes.
And so this is really following up on that update. So we have no long presentation tonight, so we're going to keep it short and sweet, just kind of give you an update. So we're going to be in subcommittee, I believe, on this. So what we're coming back here for you today is that, as we announced last time, is that we are adding in to our first phase a life science building at Suffolk Downs. And we're really excited about it. It's going to be almost 400,000 square feet of life science uses. It's actually, it will be in place of two smaller residential buildings. And again, I think we previewed a little bit of this before, so we'll have more details on that. But it's very exciting for us at this point. But as part of that, we do need to make two small zoning changes as part of this. So I believe this is opening up with a public hearing for those. One of them has to do with some minor height setbacks for this building. Life science buildings like to be rectangles, pretty perfect rectangles, so just because of the scale and the use of it, so that's one. And then second is a minor item related to signage. Many of you might know that the Stop &amp; Shop in Target store actually has a sign on our property, and this was just something we didn't focus on before. But technically, they still need that sign. And so the current zoning doesn't allow for other parties to have signage in the Suffolk Downs district, and so we're trying to correct that minor detail as well. So again, very two small minor items. We'll be before subcommittee with more of the details. But just, you know, again, we're really excited about to move forward on the first commercial building at Suffolk Downs, and really appreciate your time. We look forward to talking to you in subcommittee.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Any other proponents? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Opponents? People opposed? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Counselor Rotundo?
Whatever we can do to move this project along, we need to do so with a half-a-billion-dollar innovation site. I know, like myself, we've championed this, this is something we need to get done.
Thank you. Much as I would love to do that, we still follow procedures here.
I understand.
Any other counselors? Hearing and seeing none? Anybody in the audience? Planning Board, I apologize. Here's the chairman of the Planning Board, Mr. Charone.
We have to sit in judgment on this.
Oh, you're here to sit in judgment? Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Move the question. Zoning? Zoning?
Calendar item number seven, hearing called is ordered on the application of the McClellan Highway Development Company, LLC, care of the H Y M Investment Group, LLC, 1 Congress Street, Boston, Mass., requesting an amendment to a master plan PUD special permit allowing for redevelopment within the Suffolk Downs Overlay District created pursuant Chapter 17.26 of the revised ordinances of the City of Revere.
Again, a public hearing. Proponents?
Again, Doug Mans from the H Y M Investment Group. And again, once the zoning is passed, we also need to amend the special permit amendment, or special permit that goes along with it. And so again, we look forward to seeing everyone in subcommittee, and we will provide additional details then. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? People in favor? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? People opposed? Hearing and seeing none? Close that side of the hearing. Any counselors? Hearing and seeing none? I guess we'll go to zoning.
Calendar item number eight, hearing called is ordered on the application of Mikeith, LLC, 74 Regina Road, Lynn, Mass., seeking permission from the Revere City Council to modify and expand a non-conforming eight-unit apartment structure by establishing and confirming the existing 10 units within the apartment structure at 565 to 567 Beach Street.
Public hearing. Proponents?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. President, and members of the City Council. This evening, my name is Attorney Larry Simeoni, and I'll be representing Mikeith, LLC, a Massachusetts Limited Liability Company, at 74 Regina Road, Lynn, Massachusetts. I also have with me the manager of the LLC, Mr. John Pace. This evening, we seek before this honorable body a special permit to modify a non-conforming structure in accordance with 1740-030B, specifically to make alterations to that non-conforming structure in order to increase the existing insane purpose that the structure is currently committed to. The property is 565 Beach Street, is also known as 29 Walnut Street. It is on Lot X, which is 7,274 square feet, with frontage of 90.8 feet on Beach Street, and it has frontage of 59.1 feet on Walnut Street. The property is located in General Business District. It's a three-story brick veneer building. The use of multifamily apartments are allowed by right in this district. The lot unfortunately is a non-conforming lot. The General Business District's minimum lot criteria is 10,000 square feet. You've just heard me say that the lot is 7,274 square feet. And the GB District has frontage of 100 feet, therefore making this a non-conforming lot. And when we have a non-conforming lot under Massachusetts law, the structure is automatically non-conforming as well. The structure, having been built in 1906, does also fail and meets compliance with the setback requirements. The various setback requirements for side and rear cannot be met in light of the present location of the building, and nor can the off-street parking. At this point, we looked at the assessors' records, and the assessors' records, based on the most recent assessors' card, establishes this building as an eight or greater-than building, and the history of the assessors' records proves the same. So therefore, what we'd like to do, and we're proposing to do, by alterations to this non-conforming structure, Mr. Pace wants to modify this structure with interior and exterior improvements. Some of these improvements include exterior renovations and repointing, removing a large wall that's in front of the structure that is being used by the general public as a place to throw their trash when they go by. So that will remove that and remove that serious issue that he's having. He's also going to be windows and doors and interior improvements as well. At this point, Mr. President, should you have no questions, I'd be asking that this matter go to the subcommittee on zoning.
Okay, so any other proponents? People in favor? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Opponents? People opposed? Anybody opposed? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Counselors?
Mr. President.
Counselor Nowosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this is in my ward, and just for edification for the counselor making the presentation, it's Walnut Avenue, not Walnut Street, that's up and north of Revere. But, you know, I know the building. The building's been here, as they said, since 1906. And, you know, what you see is what you get. You know, the owner is willing to fix the property up and make it better-looking inside and outside, so we'll talk further on it during zoning. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Hearing and seeing none?
Unfinished business. Calendar item number nine, motion presented by Council President Zambudo that Rule 20, Presentation of Awards of the City Council Rules of Order, be amended as follows. The maker of the motion offering the certificates shall be responsible for the cost of materials for the certificate at $5 per certificate. The cost includes one presentation folder, one certificate, and one gold seal. Total cost shall be paid in full prior to the presentation and shall be paid to the Office of the City Clerk Office Materials Account.
I guess I need to ask for permission to speak here. This laid on the table because it's a rule change, and we're simply going to vote on it tonight. I think most of us are in agreement that this is the right way to go, and we'll keep from taxing the clerk's budget by doing this. So, Madam Clerk, on roll call, I guess?
On the motion, on the rule change, Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Voting yes, Counselor Guinasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nowosowski.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Serino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the rule change has been approved. Next up is the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee Report.
Chairman Morabito.
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier, the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee met, and we discussed an ordinance further amending the short-term rental ordinance in the city. There were minor changes, but... So let me just go down the list. So that Chapter 8.06 changed to 8.09, and some of the amendments were just to strengthen and put some teeth into the ordinance. And these amendments will help strengthen the ordinance, and it'll be a benefit to the residents, neighborhoods, and neighbors. So... And it was voted out favorably tonight. So if we can get a roll call this evening?
I thought you were going to go on a little longer.
No grandstanding with Morabito.
Okay. Madam Clerk, are we ready for this? Okay. On the second reading, all in favor, all opposed, so audit. On the third and final reading, all in favor, all opposed, so audit. Request for roll call on engrossment and undayment.
Shall the City Council approve an ordinance further amending the short-term rental ordinance? Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guinasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nowosowski.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Serino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance is engrossed and ordained. Calendar item number 11, we're up to the Appointment Subcommittee Report.
Chairman Guinasso.
Mr. President, earlier this afternoon, the Appointment Subcommittee met, and we had four items on the agenda. The first being 21-174, appointment of Sarah Budak to the Zoning Board of Appeals. We voted to place that on file. I asked the City Council to do this, get, honor the wishes of the Subcommittee, and place it on file. Second is 21-213, reapportment of earthwork industry as a licensed drainlayer. Mr. President, the Chair of the Appointment Subcommittee has a steadfast rule that you need to appear before the Appointment Subcommittee in order to be given the privilege to work within our community. That's a very, very simple request. This individual and this company has not shown favor to come before us with three types of invitations to appear before us. So I ask that this be removed from the list to be reappointed, and I also ask that a letter of correspondence be sent to the Department of Public Works notifying them that they ought not do business in the community until they've further noticed, until they appear or they get reappointed to the, as a licensed drainlayer. Very simple request. Next is 21-261, appointment of... You know what we ought to do, Mr. President, because of these two, the first two are different? I ask that we vote out 21-174, ask that to place that appointment, and we draw that. So I ask for a roll call.
We place that on file during committee.
Terrific, okay. So it's all done. Now the reapportment of earthwork, I ask that that be removed.
That was also placed on file during committee.
21-261, appointment on John Chu to the Conservation Commission. That was voted out favorably by the Committee of the Appointment Subcommittee, and I ask the Council do so also this evening. And 21-288, appointment of Hazem Adam to the Zoning Board of Appeals. That was also voted out favorably, and I ask that the City Council do the same, and we could take these two appointees at one vote. If there's no objection from the Council. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Shall the City Council confirm the appointments as reported by Chairman Guinasso? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guinasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, the appointments have been confirmed. Onto Communications, calendar item number 13, communication from the Election Commissioner requesting approval for early voting in person.
Recall the rule? Press the button? Diane.
Diane Colala, Election Commissioner for the City of Revere. On July 29th, the Elections Department received notification from the Secretary of State's Office that the governor signed a bill to extend voting by mail and to implement early voting in person to include local elections and preliminaries. As such, I'm respectfully requesting the City Council to have a public vote that early voting would be held at Revere City Hall for the September 14th and November 2nd election. And it would start... One second. For the September preliminary, it would start on Saturday, September 4th, and it would end on Friday, September 10th. It would not include Labor Day holiday. And on Saturday, the hours would be 9 to 2, and Tuesday through Friday, it's the regular hours of Revere City Hall. Additionally, for the November 2nd local election, it would start on October 23rd, and it would run right through, and that's a Saturday, so it would be 9 to 2, and then it would run right through the 29th of October, ending at 12:15 on Friday.
Call?
Once the council... Once the council, oh, I apologize. If the council approves it, ads would be put in the local newspapers, on Facebook, on the website, cable, Facebook.
On the roll call. You have something, Counsel Rotundo? Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. President, to the Elections Commissioner. The last election that we did mail-in voting, do you recall how many people had mailed in their vote?
About 13,000 voters.
13,000 mailed in their vote?
We had 13,000 vote-by-mail ballots. Yay us.
13,000, thank you.
Pat me right on the back. Sorry.
Good job.
Thank you.
Great job, Diane.
Thank you, Counselor.
On the roll.
Shall the City Council approve the Election Commissioner's request to implement early voting for the September 14th preliminary election and November 2nd local election? Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nowosowski.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Serino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the request has been approved.
Thank you very much.
Calendar item number 14, Communication from the Election Commissioner requesting approval of the warrant for the preliminary election on Tuesday, September 14th, 2021.
The warrant for the upcoming city preliminary, it just is an information sheet for the voters. It tells the locate polling locations, the offices on the ballot, the times the polls are open and closed, et cetera. I would respectfully request your approval of the warrant.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed, so audit.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, so what number is it?
Number 38.
Okay, we're going to take number 38 out of order here. See, people have been waiting patiently.
Calendar item number 38, Motion presented by Counsel Rotundo that the mayor requests the Traffic Commission to provide resident parking passes for the residents of the Jack Satterhouse and that 10 home care provider parking passes be provided to the administration of the Jack Satterhouse for their use. Further, that the mayor requests our state delegation to request that DCR investigate the feasibility of providing visitor passes for residents at the Jack Satterhouse and other properties located on Riviera Beach Boulevard.
Counsel Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Clearly, I want this to go to committee because it has to be worked out in a manner that works for everybody. But to be quite honest with you, the people that are affected the most are the people at the Satterhouse and the seniors on the Boulevard. Since the meters down on Riviera Beach have taken up much of the parking there, many people throughout Riviera Beach Boulevard who are older, need care, and more importantly, am I all set? Thank you. But who need care, they need to have a care provider. Sometimes that care provider could be a family member. And having been a nurse and have worked for a home care company and have parked on Riviera Beach and gone into the various buildings to include the Satterhouse, the one thing I can tell you, it is extremely hard to get a pass as a health care provider when today you're told, oh, by the way, we're switching your schedule, you're going to Riviera because so-and-so was out sick, and now you have to park there. With what we have currently in place by the DCR, if a nurse were to have to change her schedule and go and care for someone on Riviera Beach, they would have to come to City Hall, file for an application, wait for that application, and that's not how health care is run. When someone is in need of care, when someone is in need of assistance, whether you be an occupational therapist, physical therapist, respiratory therapist, or a nurse, I should be able to just park and go into the building without hindrance. And my thought would be is that the people that are at the building, that be a condo association member, a concierge, or for this matter, Steve Post over at the Satterhouse, have a certain amount allotted to them for that particular purpose alone, and actually just give it to the health care worker. Now, I know that they have a certain amount of visitor passes at this point, but what about the family member that's coming in to take care of their senior, their loved one, and so forth? They don't have that opportunity because they don't, quote, "qualify." But yet, the state does provide funding for family members who do provide care for a loved one. So how do you transverse that morass of the legality, the application process, and the DCR? And this is what we have to do in committee. We have to find a happy medium for all seniors up and down Riviera Beach Boulevard, but for most important in my mind, for the people at the Satterhouse, because quite frankly, they were the most hard-hit in the entire COVID-19 crisis, the hottest hit. So as far as I'm concerned, it has a very, very dear soft spot to me. I want to find a solution for this. I've spoken with Steve Post, Robert O'Brien from the city, as well as other people about possibly adding parking in the back. There's an issue with that. Alternatives about trying to park over on the Beverly site and Beverly Street area, but that is inundated with water. So at the end of the day, the greatest hope is to come up with a happy medium. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to set something straight. Back in December was the first time I heard about the installation of parking meters on Riviera Beach Boulevard. And I heard from, that from a news organization in Boston, I believe it was Channel 7. And they asked if I would meet with them. And I did meet with them. And anybody that saw that, parts of that meeting, realized that I was 100% against parking meters to begin with on Riviera Beach Boulevard, okay? And I went to the mayor, and the mayor had conversations with the Commissioner of DCR. And those conversations, and some further input from myself to the mayor and to the Commissioner, resulted in no parking meters being placed on the residential side of Riviera Beach Boulevard. And subsequently, every resident of this city received a pass from the city through DCR to allow residents to park on that area. That's the area that runs from 320 Riviera Beach Boulevard all the way down to Carey I have spoken with Stephen Post many times. We had a meeting over at the police station a couple of weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago. I think the only way you correct this is to give people visitor passes. One visitor pass, not two, or three, or four, or five. And there are 300 people, to my knowledge, residing in the Jack Satterhouse, okay? What could happen as a result of that is people could give the visitor passes to friends, et cetera, et cetera. That's something we would have no control over. I believe that that's something that should be controlled by the building itself, whether it be a concierge, a manager, a director, or whatever the case. And my reason for asking that no meters be placed on the side of the, the westerly side of Riviera Beach Boulevard from 320 down to Carey Circle, senior citizens have people that come to visit them. Might be a son, a daughter, a cousin, a health care worker. Some of them have health care workers on a weekly basis, I'm sure Doc, Mr. Rotundo can agree to. So, make it, I'm making it very clear. I'm in favor of providing service to the Jack Satterhouse, okay? Their employees, the relatives that come to visit them, and health care workers, okay? I'm not against that. So whatever the will of this council is, or the will of the parking department, I will support 100%. And that's the way that should be handled. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
And again, I want to reiterate, the only person in December that was out there arguing for the residents of the Boulevard and against the parking meters was Counsel Powers. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Counselor Nowosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I feel for everybody at the Satterhouse. There are many, 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 many friends there for years. And I just want to say one thing. If you have health care workers, some, a PCA, or someone that works for an agency, tell them now, get their health care passes. Get them now. Don't wait. I, my wife has assistance. I tell all my nurses, my PT people, my OT people, or PCAs, get a pass now. A lot of them don't know it exists. You can go up to the parking people, not you, but they have to go up to the parking office. Their company will have to pay for them if they still charge for now. I'm not sure what their situation is. But as long as they bring an ID, their registration, and their driver's license, and something that shows that they work for this agency, they can have it, and it's good for anywhere in the city, not just Ocean Ave or the Boulevard, or places like the Satterhouse. But I also want to ask that we give a friendly amendment on part two of this motion, that the investigation of visitor passes also include Ocean Avenue. I've received many phone calls from people at 370, 364, 388, 394, 376, 382, people that don't have cars even. They're elderly people, 90 years old. They can have their family or friends come visit them, and I think that we ought to look and see about visitor passes for these folks on Ocean Avenue. So I would ask that that be added to that, part two of that motion. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Counsel Rotundo, you got something else to add?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, Boston visiting nurses, when I was working with them, they used to obtain these particular placards. And usually, in particular when I was in Boston, you would have it, you would put it up there and so forth. But unfortunately, it doesn't translate. And personally, I think at a state level, there should be a universal, you know, sticker that says this. But unfortunately, that's not the case. Hopefully, we can fix this problem on Ocean Ave as well. Ira, I perfectly agree with you on this. I know for a fact that this is a major issue on Ocean Avenue. So, Mr. President, I happily accept that amendment.
Counselor Serino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to clarify, are these the apartment buildings on Ocean Ave that would get visitor placards? The, like waterfront square and? Could, could we make, could that be a separate, Mr. President, through you, could that be a separate motion? Can you divide the two?
They're all going to traffic, they're all going to the Traffic Commission. If you want to separate it, I don't have a problem with it, but they just amended it, so. You want to change that to a separate motion? No? Okay, so.
Mr. President, I think it should be part of it because there are people that have needs.
You're being overruled, Counsel. Okay, so as amended. Okay, so now we're going to set some ground rules here, because we've got a lot of people that want to speak, and I'm going to allow everybody to speak. But I would ask that we keep it under two minutes per person, because otherwise, we're going to be here till 2 o'clock in the morning. So, the clerk is going to time you. Name and address everybody for the record, and the clerk is going to time you. So if you go over two minutes, you're going to get the buzzer. And you don't want that buzzer. Okay. Name and address for the record, sir.
Wayne Rose, 19 Thorne Deck Street. I agree with this, but I don't agree with the meters. We went out there, we protested the meters. We had Counsel Rotundo backing us. We had Counselor Janino helping us. I didn't see anyone else out there trying to get these meters off the beach. I asked Mr. Powers for help. Told me outright, there was nothing he could do to help me.
Mr. President, may I please?
Listen, we're going to, this is, you're out of order. This is not part of this motion.
Oh, that's great.
As a matter of fact, it's a lie because I was down there protesting for the Jack Satterhouse.
You're lying, that's all I can tell you.
You're here to speak on the permanent passes. If you want to speak on that.
You went to the Jack Satterhouse, you did.
You got two minutes if you want to speak on that.
I just, I think it's a great idea. These people at the Jack Satterhouse have suffered enough, so.
Agreed.
I think it should be passed.
Great, thank you. Any, come on up, just get in line, come on up.
Point of information, Mr. President.
State your point.
I just wanted to state for the point that on the first protest that was canceled during the rain, Mr. Rose, I think you remember that, we came out there, I think your wife saw me, I was actually with Counsel Powers. I just want to make sure that we were out there. I think everyone in the council, no one here in the city wants the meters. There's not one person I've spoken to in the city of Riviera, this isn't about meters. There's not one.
Listen, we're getting off track here. Time out. We're getting off track here.
I was out there. The entire city council was out there, just want to make sure you know that.
Thank you. Counsel Janino, you have something?
Just a quick point of information. I just want to let people know I'm recused from this motion, so I can't speak on it because the language in the motion is requesting me in my official capacity as state rep to do something. So if anyone's wondering why I'm not speaking on it, I cannot legally, so I'm recused. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Thank you.
Point of order as well.
State your point.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, to Mr. Rose. I was on the public hearings in October, when, when these, this initially came up in October, and I was the one who authored on behalf of the entire council, and I believe the entire council, with the exception of one who had to recuse himself, we did submit testimony back in October. So. I'm talking about when it, during the process.
Enough, I'm not going to have this back and forth. I'm sorry. We're on a particular motion, we're going to stick to it. We have rules up here, we're going to obey them. Go right ahead. Name and address, please.
Thank you. My name is Roxanne Ayello, and my address is 420 Riviera Beach Boulevard. What I want to say is that this parking situation, I'm not discussing meters, the parking on Oak Island Street, has become quite a problem for us at the Satterhouse. We were given 19 visitor cards in the whole entire building, which are only available to us between Monday and Friday, okay? So in the event that somebody calls you, your child, or someone, a cousin, or a sister, on a Saturday and says, I'm going to come down and visit you, and I might want to stay overnight, we have no access to the availability of getting the visitor card, okay? This is a real problem. I mean, we know there's a lot of people that live in the building, but at no such time are they going to get 200 visitors on a weekend. So nobody has to be concerned about an overabundance of people parking on Oak Island Street. What we're asking for is let us have our own visitor card, our pass, like everybody else does in other cities. In Somerville, people are allowed two visitor cards per household. I mean, I'm a lifelong resident of this city, okay? I pay excise tax, and I have to go to a complete hassle to have somebody come down. I have a child that lives in New Hampshire. Last Friday, she was coming down here, and God is my judge, I was out at 7:00 in the morning, riding around the street. I had the visitor card that I was given. I rode up and down, up and down, to find a parking spot for her, that I could put my car there, so that when she comes, I can move my car. And I couldn't find a spot, okay? I finally parked on Riviera Beach in front of the building, because I do have that DCR sticker. And I figured when she came, I put her there. I mean, this is not normal. This had no thinking. Whoever started this whole confusion, there was no thinking in this plan. There's all kinds of different stickers. Now, I hear there's a Riviera Residence sticker. We're not allowed to get it. Because we have a park, I have a parking spot. We're not allowed to get it, because we have a park, I have a parking spot in my parking lot. So if I go to visit my son, who lives on Lincoln Street, I can't park on the street.
See, I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to cut you off, but I got your point. I got your point, and listen, nobody, nobody, nobody on this council advocated for meters on the beach. We didn't create this problem, it was created for us. We're trying to find a solution, but it's a difficult solution, because the beach is controlled by someone else, not us. But thank you for your input.
Okay, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Mr. President?
Thank you.
Towards your point.
Go ahead.
If her daughter or her son were to come down during a Friday, and say she was discharged from a hospital, and that loved one was to come by and take care of her, what would happen? So this is why this has to be fixed.
I got it, Judge, so it's not confusing. Go right ahead. Name and address, please.
My name is Cynthia Kena. I live at 420 Revere Beach Boulevard, number 336, Jack Satterhouse. Okay, so, we wanted the visitor passes because we are responding to what the city has required. So we understand the DCR created the problem and started the whole issue. We understand that completely. We're not fighting that. We have nothing to do with that, okay? The problem is, is we are a unique building. We are, I think, only, the only one in the city that's right on the beach, deals with seniors completely. And a lot of them do not drive, a lot of them are handicapped, disability, they depend on family to help them. Now, the 19 visitor's passes that the city gave us was really a token compared to, we have not 300 people in the building, but we have 200, and we have 260 residents with, 280 residents with 266 apartments. Now, you will never get everyone converging on Oak Island Street, Arcadia Street, and the other parts of Oak Island, because at one time, they will never be here at one time. In the past history, as far as adding on to, when the building was constructed, from what I understand that was passed down, the, during construction, it, the city did say the overflow could park on the Boulevard or the associated streets. Now that Oak Island is 24/7 residential parking, we need, we really do need the visitor passes. And as far as, Mr. Novoselfsky, I know, I hate to say this, but I did pull up on the website for special family caretaker consideration. You have to go through rings and hoops in order to get that. Now, what if you came home from a hospital, on say, on a Friday night, and you needed someone to stay with you overnight? What the heck's going to happen to them? I mean, that's what we're fighting with. We're not asking for anything outrageous. I mean, this affects every single senior in the city. What we're doing is focusing on the seniors in our building. Then the city council can go ahead and decide what to do with the rest of the seniors in the city.
I hate to cut you off, but I have to.
I know, I know, but...
Thank you for your input.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry, thank you very much, everyone.
Name and address for the record.
Ronald Clark, 98 Whitney Ave. I've been following this since May of June, since this went to traffic previous with them. And I strongly support that they get either the visitor passes or the city passes, parking permits. I think if they're paying the excise tax, they're more than entitled to the permits as we are. But just one comment, I don't know if it's you guys, or the mayor would request that the DCR shows up at the traffic. I'm guessing this is going to go to traffic. So, without a DCR rep there, you're completely wasting time, because they've already gone that route. You have to have a DCR rep there.
Thank you for your input. Name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. My name's Albert Fiori. I reside at 350 Revere Beach Boulevard, been a resident of the city for over 40 years. I rise today to support the residents of the Jack Satterhouse, Revere Beach, and the elderly along the beach. Mr. President, we issued 30,000 or some odd parking stickers. People on Revere Beach couldn't get resident parking for 100 years. All of a sudden, these developments go up, and there's parking stickers for everybody. Variances, special permits up the yin yang, and these out-of-town developers get these parking spots. Well, I understand where you come...
You got to stick to the, you got to stick to, you're not, you're not sticking to the program.
Mr. President, I respect your...
You're making a, you're making a political speech. I'm not going to allow it.
Well, Mr. President, I respect your position. I sat in that chair long before you. This parking is related. Now, I understand the DCR, I understand the DCR is responsible for some of it, but we're talking about a situation in the Jack Satterhouse. For nine weeks, they were unconstitutionally locked in their apartments, nine weeks! And this is the banks they get...
Well, that's not, again, you're off, you're off the subject.
Okay, well, let me...
Stick to the subject, please.
All right, Mrs. Imbod, I respect you very much. I've known you a long time. So the subject being is, they have lived here a long time, they deserve the right to have...
I agree.
Okay, glad you agree. To be able to have caretakers come in, and I don't know if anybody is, from what I gather, you need to have a document signed by a doctor in order to get a special caretaker. And I see Mr. Rotundo agreeing there. Do you know how hard it is to get discharged from a hospital? You could be four to eight hours waiting to get out of hospital, waiting for a wheelchair, waiting for your prescriptions, waiting for your home care instructions, waiting for a ride. The last thing you need to worry about is a doctor signing off, a doctor signing off on some document to send to a parking clerk. So, Mr. President, I'll try to keep this as brief as possible. Okay, all right. Well, I ask that we not pass the buck to the parking department, because we all understand that the parking department, the members of the commission, were appointed by the mayor and confirmed by this very body.
Thank you for, thank you for your input.
So the buck stops at City Hall, Mr. Chief President.
Thank you for your input. Your two minutes are up.
Let's do the right thing and give these people what they deserve.
Okay, come on. Thanks. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Kiki Alexandrato. I live at 420 Revere Beach, 514, 514. And I want to tell you that if you remember us now, we will remember you on election time. 286 votes, I don't think it's a number to disregard. So, give us the passes, don't make it a big deal, and just pass it. Because if you don't, we will pass you out.
If I had, if I had the authority to give you the pass, I'd give it to you tonight. You got to understand the process. We don't have the authority to give you the pass. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Jean Aronson, I live at 420 Revere Beach Boulevard, apartment 814. I'd like two clarifications. Stickers, I have a gray sticker, overnight sticker, I have a beach sticker. I went out early 6:30 yesterday morning, there was a ticket on my car. This is a warning, you will be charged, da-da-da-da-da-da, you have until September 1st. I have a picture of the sticker.
Where were you parked?
Oak Island, Oak Island. Okay, I'd like to note, because now I hear that the stickers are going to be changed in December to a different color. I went to the parking department, the parking department was closed. I went to the police department, they said, "We don't know what you're talking about, DCR knows." But then again, they said, "DCR doesn't know what they're talking about either." I cannot tell you how emotional people are getting at the Jack Satterhouse. They're getting angry, they're getting sick, they're getting discouraged, they're getting argumentative. And this is a great place to live. And we're at our fourth season, we're at the end quarter, right? Anybody over 75 here?
Nobody's going to admit it.
Okay, if I may remind this gentleman, Gemasso, I'm sorry, sir. I'm sorry. Is it Gemasso? Mr. Gemasso, I'm sorry, but, but this is important. Earlier, you were upset about the B&amp;B coming into the neighborhoods, listening to the noise and everything else. And at the end of what you said, you said, "People want to go home, hang their hats, and be with their families." On the other side, my family came, they didn't enjoy the visit, they were looking out the window the whole time to see, is the car going to be taken? Is this going to be taken? And like somebody else said here, they've suffered enough. And we just want family too. And I thank you very much.
Thank you for your input. Thank you. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Christian Mahano. I'm a resident from 51 Sattermore Street. I'm really aware about Jack Satterhouse. I totally agree with the visitor passes. However, this is something we need to think and work together, because we got to focus also on all the restaurants next to it. However, if there is anybody who has overnight, they're more than welcome to change to 24 hours with the parking guard office. And I believe we just, we just missing communication over here, and we can all work together about, make solution to this. And totally agree for the visitor passes. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Anybody else? This is, Traffic Commission.
They sent us here. They sent us here. They sent us here. That's why I'm saying, if you don't have the DCR, it's a waste of time.
The Oak Island Street belongs to the city. I know you're annoyed, but we have to...
I'm not annoyed. Don't, don't say I'm annoyed. I'm not annoyed. I'm trying to explain to you, they have the jurisdiction to issue the parking permits.
Point of order.
State your point, Counselor.
We have a right to change the rules, if I'm not mistaken. We have the, we are a legislative body, and I believe what we should do is have a combined meeting with the commission and this body, sit down, and wield this out in committee.
That's not, Mr. President?
Mr., may I say something?
Title 10, Judge, you're wrong.
May I say something? Please? Okay. We started with the mayor. The mayor sent us to our local city councilor. City councilor, at that point, I'm not mentioning names, said that he would not support us. We went to the Traffic Commission. The Traffic Commission told us that we had to come before the city council to change the bylaws. Now, if you all read the letter that I sent you, that is what we're doing. So, we've been going around in circles for months.
I apologize that you got bad information. I apologize for that. We're going to correct that, okay?
Please, if someone can give us a solution.
Listen, we're going to find a solution, but we've got to go by the rules. The rules right now is, it's the jurisdiction of the Traffic Commission. If, if, if we can find a solution, it's going to have to be through them. That's what we're going to do.
Point to personal privilege.
Judge.
Mr. President, we, matter of fact, Patrick Keefe was the one that sponsored the citywide parking system. The guard implemented. We wrote the ordinance, we have a right to change the ordinance. That's the, that's my understanding of, of the rules, but I could be wrong.
And you are.
Okay.
But we're not going to debate that here tonight.
Mr. President, point of order.
State your point.
Mr. President, I just want to explain, if we pass this motion tonight...
Counselor Novoselfsky has the floor.
If we pass this motion tonight, we are instructing the Traffic Commission to do what's in this motion. That's what they're looking for. That, that, that's what, if we pass this motion tonight, that's what's happening.
That's what we're doing.
We are going to the Traffic Commission and telling them that we want resident parking passes for residents at the Satterhouse, and that 10 home care provider passes be provided to the administration of the Jack Satterhouse for their use. Forget Part II. Forget Part II for now. But that, we're asking them, we're asking them to change the rules. They change the rules for parking and traffic. We don't. That's under, like you said, Title 10. But we are, they wanted us to, you wanted us to ask, we're asking through this motion. Through this motion.
Mr. President?
Counselor Powers, quickly, what, what do you, what do you got?
Mr. President, I want to make a substitute motion, that this city council direct the parking department that issues these permits and passes to issue visitor passes to anyone living on Revere Beach Boulevard, not just the Satterhouse, the Breakers, all the other boulevards. A visitor pass as requested by that person.
You got to, you got to list streets with that, John.
Mr. President, Mr...
Revere Beach Boulevard. Mr. President, parking down there already, Mr. President.
I think, point of... Mr. President? I think that's just complicating things.
Counselor Visconti has the floor.
It is, it is evident, it's obviously evident, that the parking situation on Revere Beach is broken, okay? And obviously, it's, it's, it's very sad to see all these residents having to go through what they're going through right now, obviously, right? To see these people up there, all right? Now, I understand, I understand, and, and, and what I, what I would, what I don't want to see is, if this has to go to Traffic Commission, and they're going to just send it back to us, then we're just sending these people around in a circle. And I, I understand.
Mr. President?
What I would prefer, if possible, that we end up sending it to a subcommittee and decide what can be done in a subcommittee, and then go from there. I, I would hate to see that. I wasn't aware that it was sent into a, the Traffic Commission, and they sent it back to us. I would never have you go back to a Traffic Commission, so...
All right, here's, here's the deal.
I would prefer having it sent to a, a subcommittee and discussing it and trying to get a resolution from there.
What has to happen is the Traffic Commission has to amend Title 10. That's the only way this will work.
Point of order. So, can I speak?
Mr. President, I believe Counselor Sorino wishes to speak.
You keep going around in circles. Can I speak?
Go right ahead. Counselor Morabito.
Okay, do you guys want to hear my point of view? So, so this is how I look at it. Regardless, it's a state sticker. I think the residents of Jack Satter has been through enough the past two years. They've been cooped up in, basically in prison. So, so what we need to do is, we need to pass a motion showing the Traffic Commission that we are in favor of this.
We just did.
That's all they want, and that's all.
We just did.
We didn't pass it, we didn't pass the motion.
Mr. President, Mr. President?
What do you think is before us right now?
Not pass it, so let's cut the talk and let's pass it.
Point of order. I'm trying to let everybody speak for us.
Point of order, Mr. President. I believe Counselor Sorino has a point to personal privilege.
Let me let this... You want to defer it to my colleague? Okay.
Mr. President, so we do, we obviously, we write the ordinance, which that's, that's clear. Is the Jack Satterhouse not, I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but isn't the Jack Satterhouse one of the buildings that is mentioned in the ordinance? So we would have to vote as a council to amend it, to remove the Satterhouse from the ordinance. And I got some, a member of the Traffic Commission... A member of the Traffic Commission who's watching tonight texted me, and that's their understanding.
It's incorrect. It's incorrect.
Mr. President? Chief Callahan's here.
We're going to pass this motion as is right now, and then we're going to deal with it, okay? But the bottom line is, it's easy to say what we want to do, we got to do it legally. We can't, and, and it starts with the amendment to Title 10 and the Traffic Commission, and that's where it's got to go. So, we, the chief of police has something to say. Could you come, please, please step up.
Folks, sorry. Well, listen, I think we may be able to have a resolution here. Just like Counselor Sorino was saying, we have the council vote to make that amended, to make that one of the ineligible buildings, send it back to the Traffic Commission, and we can vote on it. And then that will correct the problem, I believe, for these folks here. Yes.
To get permits, but you can't give them the permits on the Boulevard, because we don't control the Boulevard. It's got to be, it's got to be for Oak Island Street, yeah, okay.
Yeah, for the overflow areas to park, but I'm sure we can come to some resolution for these folks over here at 420 Boulevard.
So you have, you have the chief of police who sits on the traffic commission that says we're gonna have a solution here, so there you go.
Listen, we can have a solution for you folks here. We always get it done one way or another. We can figure it out.
Yeah, I'm gonna announce his candidacy next.
No, I ain't.
Kidding, kidding. Thank you, chief.
No, thank you, and I'm sorry I was so persistent, but I just, we kind of worked something out.
Good stuff, okay. So that's where we're going.
Some other people on the traffic commission.
Listen, to my friends at the Satterhouse here, we apologize that you had bad information from, from the traffic commission, but when we have the chief of police who sits on it tells us he can find a solution, I think all your efforts are worth it now tonight. So thank you for all your input.
We put in a specific motion.
Mr. President, Mr. President, personal privilege, as because Counsel Serena cannot speak on this issue because of her particular stature, what I would say is this, and I'm speaking on her behalf, she's never asked me, she has been working on this diligently, both on the city side and on the state side. She's been working very, very, very hard. And in fact, her father sits on the traffic commission. And so I can tell you that even though she's sitting there in silence because the law permits it not to say anything, when you look to your left, I can tell you right now, she's been working diligently just as much as everybody else here to effect a change for you people, and I don't want you to forget that.
All right, let's move on.
Let's do this. But I wanna call, I wanna call on the chief and I wanna call on Fiskay.
On behalf of the entire city council. Mr. President.
Mr. Ca, Mr. President.
Point of order? I mean.
State your point.
May I present a.
Can you take the, take the mask off, please? I can't hear you with the mask.
Okay. Can you hear me now? Could I amend the motion, further amend the motion?
We already ordered the motion.
All right, so. Can I offer?
Make, make another motion.
Verbal motion to remove 420 Revere Beach Boulevard from the list on, in our, in our ordinances, Chapter 10, Section 34, Subsection 20, the citywide resident parking sticker program, to remove 420 Revere Beach Boulevard from that list.
I'll second that motion.
That does it, right there.
That's ordered to go to the traffic commission.
Correct.
Thank you all for coming.
Get back to the regular order of business here.
Come on, Stephen, let's go.
Calendar item number fifteen, communication from the chief of police presenting the fiscal year 2021 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program.
Chief Callahan. Great, welcome.
It's been an interesting evening.
It has been. It's close enough to hold.
Counsel, thank you for having me up here, honorable counsel. I'm here tonight for your support on a Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. These are grants we get all the time for the police department. It helps us with equipment and different things that we need. And this particular grant is going to be for the total of $22,040. And basically, we're going to purchase a few more cameras for the community and some other things. We're going to do a 4-1-1 tip line, especially for like cell phones and things like that that we don't have. We did some research with some other communities, and they said it was extremely useful because people can remain anonymous when they text information to us, or they can send it to us on social media. So it protects them. They don't have to expose who they are, but yet it gives us some very important information sometimes when we have a crime or a serious issue, and it helps people cooperate with us. The breakdown on the money, we're going to get three additional Flock cameras. They're basically license plate readers, and the cost on those, for the total of the three of them, is $7,500. Then we're going to get that 4-1-1 subscription for the tips. It's like Text-a-Tip type thing for 24 months, and that's going to cost us $10,200. Then we're going to get some other equipment that is basically community outreach, literature and things like that, and we're getting 48 community service polo shirts and some other magnets, safety guides, crime prevention guides and things like that. And the total cost with those items are $43.40. So that's a total of $22,040.
Thank you, chief.
If you have any other questions.
Counsel Novoselski.
Yes, sir. Chief, I know one of the things that everybody's asking for are those solar speed machines on the poles. I didn't hear any of those, and I've been asking for several locations for several years now, looking for something.
Well, we have some of those.
I'm still waiting, but waiting for Centennial Ave. We're waiting for down on Standish Road where the kids go to school. I don't know why, I can't get them down there.
I believe there's some of those as well that have been ordered, not on this grant. This grant is basically for crime prevention type stuff.
That's okay, I understand that, but I'm still, like I said, I've been waiting several years for these things to be put up.
Point of information.
Hopefully, I can get them.
Point of information. Mr. President, point of information.
Counsel McKenna.
So I've requested a couple of signs too for my ward, and what I'm hearing is they don't have anybody to install the base of them, and that's what I'm hearing. So they have 10. It's sitting in the police department, and they don't have anybody to install them. That's what I'm hearing.
Well, I know we have some of the stanchions and stuff like that for the posts and the base, and I think part of it is too, they need to have the contractor install them, but I do know we have some of them, and I can check into that.
I think you have 10.
Yes, they're out back in the storage lot, and I can get you some more information about where we're at with that.
Counsel Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief, I have put in motions a couple of times, a couple of different years, okay, for the monitors, the speed monitor that makes people aware of how fast they're going.
Yes.
And my motions have been for two on the Westerly, two on the Westerly side and two on the Esterly side of 1A, somewhere between John Avenue and Revere Street. I'm sure you're aware of the accidents we've had down there. We've had a couple of fatalities over the time I've been on the city council, and I know they're not the answer to, you know, making people stop speeding completely, but it does make people aware if it's a 55 mile an hour zone, that they're going 70 miles or 75 miles an hour. And I know it's a state highway, and I think perhaps, I guess my request is that if you could set up some type of a get-together with the state officials to look at this situation and maybe affect a good outcome. Thank you.
Yes, I believe we've had some contact with Mass DOT about that because that's a state road.
Yep.
And we'll have some other correspondents with them and see if we can get some answers about what they're going to do to help us. Because that road, it's a weekly occurrence that there's a serious accident there.
There's always a problem down there.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And historically, that's a difficult road in the city.
Counsel Rotundo.
Thank you, through you to the chief. Chief, thank you for coming. Thank you for your explanation during the previous issue. I'm in full support of cameras, and in fact, I really would hope, as I have spoken to Counsel Novoselski, that we've been having issues down around the Sandler Square area. And I'll speak to you after that.
Yes.
But one of the things that kind of comes to mind that troubles me about, this is the Tip 4-1-1 program, correct? And I know how it works and so forth. One of the things that concerns me about it is swatting, and I'm sure you're aware of what that is. Catherine Clark, our Congresswoman, was swatted using the Take 4-1-1. This particular process could leave that issue. How do we kind of mitigate that problem? Because God forbid, because unfortunately, I've been the...
Well, these Text-a-Tips will go directly like to the detectives. They'll be able to vet them out. So it's not like we're going to take immediate action on something like that that is given. But if somebody calls with some, calls like that would go to the dispatch center.
If it's, right, but I mean, I know what they do in Boston, I know what they do in Raleigh. I looked throughout the entire, you know, program and how it's set up and so forth, but they can still do it through that process. How can we safeguard that as my...
Well, we're going to have to monitor it a little bit, and, you know, we're going to have to do our due diligence.
Because for $10,000, this is a great proactive mechanism to use, and I fully support it.
Absolutely. Huge crime prevention and able to solve crimes. Like I said, other departments have used it and very successful.
Thank you, Counsel Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the chief. Mentioning the readers of the license plate, just wanted to make sure this would be, as you mentioned, in investigations, not used for traffic measures, you know, trying to get someone cutting through a red light at 3:00 in the morning by themselves, right?
No, absolutely not. Yeah, those unauthorized.
I'm not saying I condone that, but I don't want someone getting a ticket in the mail some night because, you know.
No, other states do it, we don't do that here.
Yeah, great, okay, fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it? Thank you, chief, appreciate it.
I just have one thing just to finish off about, you talked about the speed signs.
Oh, go right ahead.
I think some of the problem is we're waiting on quotes to do the work.
Okay.
So as soon as we get that done, to get the quotes and figure out who's going to actually get the job, then we'll have them installed immediately, forthwith.
Great, thank you, chief.
Folks, have a good evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Okay, next up is the auditor on 18, 19, 20, 21, 22. Do we need a vote on this? Okay.
I believe from you folks, just to authorize it.
All right, we'll take a vote.
Madam Clerk.
I don't think we need it, but we'll take it. We haven't done it in the past, but we'll vote on it.
Okay, if you don't think we need it, do it.
We endorse the Shannon Grant. How's that sound? Roll call. The JAG grant, it's the same thing.
Shall the city council endorse the JAG grant as presented by the chief of police? Counsel Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Keefe.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Morbido.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Novoselski.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Serino.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the city council has endorsed the JAG grant for this year.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Okay, next up, the auditor on 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, and one late.
Calendar item number 18, communication from the city auditor relative to the Revere TV appropriation.
Good evening, Counsel.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Viskay, I should say.
Thank you. Rich Viskay, CFO, 281 Broadway. This is the quarterly money that we get from our cable TV providers that goes directly to Revere TV for their programming and such. So you see this every three months or so. This is just the formality of appropriating that money to pay them on their invoice, so...
Roll call.
Shall the city council approve an appropriation in the amount of $169,819.96 from the Cable Access Receipt Reserve Fund to pay for Revere TV's quarterly invoice? Counsel Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Keefe. Absent.
Yes, he said yes.
Oh. Counsel McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Morbido.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Novoselski.
Yep.
Yes, Counsel Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Serino.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the appropriation has been approved. Calendar item number 19, communication from the city auditor relative to the Transportation Network Infrastructure Fund appropriation.
Thank you again. Once again, this is an annual appropriation. I believe everybody's aware, but we do get 10 cents per every Uber and Lyft ride that originates in the city of Revere. Being that it was a COVID year, the numbers were close to 100,000 a year. We got, I believe, this year, it's closer to 56,000 per Mass General. This money that has to be appropriated into our roadway repair fund, so I am here requesting as such. Thank you very much.
On the roll.
Shall the city council approve a transfer in the amount of $54,073.80 from the Transportation Fund to the Roadway Capital Fund? Counsel Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Keefe.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Morbido.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Novoselski.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Serino.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved.
Thank you.
Calendar item number 20, communication from the city auditor relative to bond authorizations for the fiscal year 2022 Capital Improvement Plan.
Pretty self-explanatory, it's going to a public hearing on the 27th.
Just a quick statement, I did provide the council with updated capital improvement plan that lays out all of the fiscal year 22 budget, as well as the five-year plan. I will collate that with the complete budget with page numbers, et cetera, but we did add some language in there about all the different funding sources we tap into for our capital, whether it be Chapter 90, our MWRAI and I funds, our State Revolver Fund for Water and Source. So good nighttime reading for everybody, but I just wanted to make you aware that I sent you that package this afternoon.
Audit to a public hearing on the 27th.
Calendar item number 21, communication from the mayor regarding an appropriation from the Community Improvement Trust Fund for the Northern Strand Underpass Art Improvements.
What do you got with this?
Yeah, this is money from our capital, Community Investment Trust Fund, rather, for some small infrastructure and orders through for Northern Strand Trail that we are working with four other communities on, and there's also another small one for some beautification on one of the MBTA buildings. You do have a certification of funds available for both of those. I don't know if there's any urgency with those, but the funds are available.
We'll probably vote on it tonight, right after Counsel Janino has something.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to speak in favor of this, and for anyone that hasn't taken advantage of visiting the trail yet, it really is amazing, and they've done a lot in terms of artwork along the sides of the trail. There's beautiful lights if you go through at night, so it's definitely worth a ride, and I think any improvements made to it are welcome because it's a gateway to our city from other communities, whether people know it or not. A lot of people do commute through the city of Revere via bicycle, so I love it. Thank you.
On the roll. Oh, sorry, Counsel Serino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the members, I just wanted to speak in support and just kind of clarify for the public certification too, that this is for improvements to the underpass along the Northern Strand Trail where the lights that Counsel Janino just referenced are. So there are like four different pillars and sections, and through the work of L. Baker and Julie DiMauro, they're going to procure artists to do kind of like a day of art where they go and paint the underpass. So I thank the administration for this, and I look forward to seeing the finished product. Thank you.
Great. On the roll.
Shall the city council approve an appropriation in the amount of $25,000 from the Community Improvement Trust Fund for the mural art project at the underpass on the Northern Strand Community Trail? Counsel Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Keefe.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Morbido.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Novoselski.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Serino.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the appropriation has been approved. Calendar item number 22, communication from the mayor regarding an appropriation from the Community Improvement Trust Fund for a mural project on the MBTA building adjacent to Butler Circle.
Yep, to the council, this is our same funding source Community Investment Trust Fund to do a mural on one of the not-so-appelling-looking buildings towards Brown Circle for a nice mural with Wondland. I believe you have a copy of it in your notes, and we seek approval. Thank you.
Counsel Rotundo.
Through you to Mr. Viskay. If you could pass on to the mayor, one of the things that I would like to see, which is done pretty much throughout the country, as you probably well know, obviously, the mural that you speak of, I fully support. However, there are private buildings that actually, in Europe and in America, where city funding is used to put murals on. If we could work with the people at Carabeta to do something there, that would be a miracle, first of all, but more importantly, would give a different face on what we're seeing there. But again, sometimes you have to reach high in order to get something, so if you could pass that on to the mayor, it's just an idea. I fully support this. Thank you.
Point of information, please.
Happy to do that, Counsel.
State your point, Counsel.
As the chairwoman of the Public Arts Commission, we're in discussion with that, so I just want to give that to Counsel Rotundo.
I love you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, on the roll.
Mr. President, Mr. President.
Oh, I'm sorry, Novoselski.
Thank you. Mr. President, this is a Butler Circle.
Oh, I'm sorry, I say Brown Circle, my mistake. I get the circles mixed up there.
Big mistake. So this area...
Too many Bs, too many Bs.
This area is shared by Ward Two and Ward Five, and looking at the artwork that they're putting there, it looks like it's exactly what we saw down on the beach at the sand sculptures. And looking at the building that's there now, which is a power station for the MBTA Blue Line, what a difference that people will see coming into our city, other than that ugly building. So thank you, and thank the mayor for us.
Thank you for the correction, Counsel.
On the roll.
Shall the city council approve a transfer in the amount of $25,000 from the Community Improvement Trust Fund for a mural project on MBTA own parcel 9157A5? Counsel Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Keefe.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Morbido.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Novoselski.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Serino.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved.
Mr. President, suspend rules to take up calendar item number 48.
No, we had one late, and that's what, yeah, I was flipping the pages too. Sorry, calendar item number 48, late motion, communication from the mayor relative to a land acquisition bond in the amount of $1,725,000 for the purpose of acquiring by eminent domain the property located at 29 Thayer Avenue.
Thank you, Counsel. I apologize for the late communication on this matter, but it did come together fairly quickly, and we wanted to put all the bond audits together for public hearing, but this is an acquisition of the property located down in, is that, what park is that? I'm sorry. Gibson Park, Gibson Park, adjacent to Gibson Park, it's for recreation, open space area. So I know it's going to committee, but I did want to apologize for the late communication because I know we don't typically like that. Thank you.
Call anybody, it's going to be audit to a public hearing, but Counsel Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say that over the past years, this has been a constant problem for the residents down there with flooding, people coming in proposing 40 apartments, 50 apartments, I think the last one was 71 apartments. And once and for all, that will put the people that live in Riverside, they'll put their mind to rest without having to worry about developers coming in there and building. And this is an RA district down there, so it's very important that the city owns this property to fend off any future development proposals down there. I know, I've talked to the mayor, and we're looking to put community boating down there or, and/or a crew program. A lot of the schools around here have crew programs, as does St. Mary's in Lynn, and there's a lot of scholarship money giving out by colleges and universities to these schools that have the crew programs. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Janino.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I will be brief, and I will speak on this in committee. I just want to say I'm so excited to see this. This property has given the residents in Riverside anxiety for so many years, and it's given me anxiety for so many years in the council, because we never know what we're going to get. We've been threatened on that property. We've had developers come in and propose units that were way too big for that one single-family home residential unit, and I want to applaud the city for stepping up and for purchasing this land, and for wanting to purchase this land for open space, for green space, for recreational space, because quite frankly, that's what we're in need of right now. We don't have enough of that in the city of Revere. We have a beautiful waterfront, but we don't have a way for people to access it. We don't have a boat ramp. We don't have a way for people to get into the water and take advantage of it. So I think this is great, and I'm really excited. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had asked probably several months back regarding this particular property about, obviously, the issue of eminent domain, more importantly, knowing what's been going on with this property. Actually, it's been involved in litigation and so forth. So the question that I have is, who currently owns it? What's it being assessed at? And what exactly are we looking to take the property for?
I could start backwards. I know the price is $1,725,000. Even though they classify it as an eminent domain, I believe it's a friendly take and that's been flushed through, but to speak to the specifics, again, this was a late file, so I put it together quickly, but I believe Bob O'Brien and members of the planning of community development, the Palm, can speak more to that. I could certainly get you the assessed value tomorrow at some point, but I don't have that information off the top of my head.
Right, no, I understand that both parcels, both the mariner and the underdevelopers assessed at one point, it was bought at one point, at one point, for $1.4 million in July 31, 2012. But my issue is, as I asked for this information months ago, and I don't know why I didn't get it, and that to me is an issue.
I apologize, I don't think it crossed my desk, but I could certainly follow up with you.
Thank you.
Counsel Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to first commend the mayor for making this happen. A while ago, when we were talking about the riverfront project, I know it was a very lengthy discussion, heated discussion. Myself, as well as Counselor Keefe, came up with a list of conditions in accepting the project, and one being was the purchase of the boatyard. We thought that purchasing the boatyard was an intricate part of the riverfront project, and there were questions on whether or not that was going to take place. It was obviously a big concern with the administration. They, in fact, got it done, and I want to say thank you to the administration for getting it done. You know, it's the start of a new development down there that is going to transform that whole area down there, and I'm glad to see that we are moving forward in that direction. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Like Counsel Visconti said, when this whole overlay was being proposed, we had a lot of hesitation, and a lot of it was because we weren't certain that we were going to be able to get this property, and I'm happy to hear that there's a friendly sort of eminent domain process being taken. I know that it sounds like a lot of money, but as Counsel Janino mentioned, we're a huge oceanfront, riverside community with no public launch, no public access to water outside of the beach, which is beautiful. But, you know, you have many communities, Beverly, Salem, Saugus, Winthrop, all with public launches, Lynn, and Revere doesn't have one. So to be able to open this up and create this key parcel for the boating community, for the rowing community, for recreational space, this, I promised the mayor, and I promised, I think you, Mr. Viskay, and many others, that I would bring this up every single month in the council, when, what's the update on the purchase of the boatyard? So you wanted to shut me up and shut us all up pretty quickly, so well done. I'm okay with that, and I'm glad to hear that this is going to be happening, and I'll be supporting it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, and not to, I know it's going to the committee, but just for the public's information, I believe by purchasing this property, it does open up a wide option of grant dollars and other funding sources that will allow us to bring it to its full potential, so we're looking forward to having this happen as well. Thank you.
As my colleagues said, Counsel Visconti and Counsel Keefe, this was the key piece to make that whole transformation of that neighborhood happen. Without this piece, it couldn't happen. So I am thrilled that we got this done early and at a reasonable, at market rate, and it was a, you know, I know it was a negotiation, and we went a lot higher than we wanted to go, and they went a lot lower than they wanted to go, and all that good stuff, but the bottom line is, that is going to, I just hope I'm around to see the transformation of that riverfront project, and I want to see kids getting in those kayaks and accessing it through this property, and so, well done to the administration and all the naysayers that said that, ah, I... "Ah, you'll never get the property," and all this stuff, I think they've got to look at now that we were serious about what was going to happen down there. And so, good job to the administration.
Thank you, Mr. President. And we fully expect you to be around to see it also.
Thank you. Some people don't want me to be around to see it. So, it's all good, all good stuff. Okay, to a public hearing on the 27th. Back to the regular order of business.
Calendar item number sixteen, communication from Anthony Cogliandro, 105 Newman Street, requesting that the city of Riviere provide small business owners with free metered parking at their business locations.
Name and address for the record, sir. I'm sorry we kept you waiting all night, but this is what happens up here.
I'm gladly waiting.
Before I let you go on, I've got to, you know, I've got to tell you, which I've already told you privately, that this is something that should be petitioned before the Traffic Commission, not the City Council. However, you did the effort, and you're going to be allowed to speak. And anybody else that wants to speak on it will speak on it. So, have fun.
Thank you, Mr. President. Anthony Cogliandro, 105 Newman Street. About a month and a half ago, I attended a community meeting for the Broadway Business District. It was all business owners from Broadway. There were a lot of issues spoken about, but a big one that came up was getting ticketed while being in and out of the businesses. I think it would be a good idea to add some permitting, maybe twenty-five, fifty dollars a year, that a business owner could purchase.
I apologize. The auditor just left, and his name tag was stuck to his back. So, I don't normally break out of laughter at a council meeting, but it was rather funny. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Do you want me to start over?
No, you're good. Keep going.
So, going back to it, I believe, just to give back a little bit to the business community, as myself, as a business owner on Broadway, I'm one of the lucky businesses that has a small parking lot. But a lot of the businesses don't have a place to park other than metered spots. And we won't get into the little amount of parking there is. But I think a little, a small way to give back to business owners in our community is to have some sort of permitting that they don't have to pay for meters, you know, during business hours. And, you know, some sort of placard. I think I speak for the entire city when we don't want another sticker. You know, but something that'd be very easy. They could, you know, purchase a permit like we do for anything in the city. Trash permit, you know, whatever it might be. So, just a thought. Hopefully, you guys will, you know, support it and send it to the Traffic Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. You have someone else who wants to speak on this? No, that's the next one? Okay, thank you. Any counselors? No. Traffic Commission.
Calendar item number seventeen, communication from Anthony Cogliandro, 105 Newman Street, requesting that the city of Riviere install two crosswalks on Ward Street.
Mr. Cogliandro.
Name and address for the record.
Yeah.
Anthony Cogliandro, 105 Newman Street. I actually had someone here that was going to speak. She did leave after speaking with Counselor Guanasso about the issue. If you go down to Ward Street, there's three crosswalks. But there's so many apartment complexes. There's one down on each side of the road. There's one in the middle closer to the BJ side. We did make small progress down there, and we got a slow children's sign. But we need a couple, at least a couple more crosswalks for those streets that intersect with it. And not to get off topic, I know how much you hate that, but also the stop sign situation down there is just terrible. So if there's something we could do, I have, you know, I have faith in everybody, in the Traffic Commission, so.
I'm sure the Traffic Commission will look favorably on the crosswalks and the stop sign, et cetera, et cetera. But the area, you're correct, it does need some attention. There's no question about it. Gets a lot of activity. You know, I'm one of the ones that stops at the four-way stop all the time. And unfortunately, other people don't. And, but it needs-
We would expect nothing less than that.
It needs attention. I'm taking a beating here tonight, I can tell you that much.
Mr. President, I'm going to give you a further beaten. A year and a half ago, I submitted a motion to put a couple of crosswalks on Ward Street and was approved by this City Council. I asked that we review the records to make certain that the Traffic Commission has not forgotten about it. And unfortunately, during the pandemic, there wasn't very many meetings held, and it wasn't a very eventful thing to do to put pressure on a body of our city while this pandemic was occurring. But there is paperwork already in place that the city clerk need just to review the motions. It was approved by this council that we have- There's a great need for crosswalks on Ward Street. And when I was speaking with the young lady that was here earlier, she was making reference to a box where they have one location taken up, where the school bus pulls up, and that location is occupied by this structure. They were just simply asked that that be removed. Now, in order to do that, we give up a spot. So, I think whatever the Traffic Commission needs to do to provide public safety as presented by this council a year and a half ago, I think they ought to do that. And I'll assist in any way I can to make sure it happens.
Thank you, counselor. I think we're all set here. Thank you for your input. Appreciate it. Traffic Commission.
Calendar item number twenty-three, communication from the mayor regarding a resolution designating Costa Park for conservation and recreational use in perpetuity.
Okay. Read it into the record, please.
Whereas, the Federal Land and Water Conservation Fund has established a grant program to assist in the acquisition, development, and renovation of park, recreation, and conservation land. And whereas, the city of Riviere has been determined eligible to apply for said funds from time to time. And whereas, awarding of these funds are contingent upon the permanent dedication of such land to recreation and conservation use. Now and therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Riviere, Massachusetts, that the following land shall be maintained as public outdoor recreation use in perpetuity unless conversion to other use is approved by the Massachusetts Secretary of Environmental Affairs, Costa Park.
On the resolution. Counselor Novoselski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I was made aware of this a couple weeks ago. And what's happened is, everybody knows where Costa Park is. And many years ago, there were buildings there, and there was a big explosion, the buildings came down. And the land was taken by tax title, and the city took it over. And they put in a basketball court at one time. But in order for us to get this money, as stated in the resolution, we have to make this parkland in perpetuity. So, I ask everybody to vote yes on this and let Costa Park, in the name of Gabe Costa, a veteran, and let this happen and move forward. Thank you.
On the resolution.
Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso is absent. Counselor Keefe.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselski.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo. Yes, Counselor Serino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the resolution has been approved. Calendar item number twenty-four was taken up during the appointment subcommittee report. Calendar item number twenty-five, communication from the mayor regarding the appointment of Dr. Drew Bunker to the Board of Health.
Appointments.
Calendar item number twenty-six, communication from the mayor regarding the appointment of Inao Asweke to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Appointments.
Calendar item number twenty-seven, motion presented by Counselor Rotundo that the City Council order to a public hearing the following amendment to the revised ordinances of the city of Riviere. Title seventeen of the revised ordinances of the city of Riviere is hereby amended by adding a new chapter, seventeen point two seven, Affordable Housing and- I'm sorry, Affordable Housing in section seventeen point two seven oh one oh, percentage of rental units designated for affordable housing. Any new development of housing with one hundred units or more must designate at least fifteen percent of all units as affordable rental units per state and federal guidelines. In conjunction with the proposed ordinance above, the $2 million from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund be dedicated to home improvement infrastructure.
Counselor Rotundo.
Mr. President, I'd just like this to go in the committee to be changed. There's obviously some modifications that need to be made. But at the end of the day, we had fourteen hundred and fifty-one applicants for fifty-one units. And as far as I'm concerned, we need to do something to help the people of our community. That's four hundred and fifty-one, fourteen hundred and fifty-one, excuse me, people who applied for fifty-one affordable housing units. And this is, you know, for me, a big issue. Most complexes are hundred units or more. They can amortize accordingly. The economics of it is clear. Maybe fifteen percent isn't the number that you want, but there should be some dedication to some type of housing, like they do in Cambridge, like they do in Boston, like they do in some of them, and pretty much in other parts of the country. Thank you very much.
Anybody else on the zoning?
Calendar item number twenty-eight, motion presented by Counselor Rotundo that the city of Riviere investigate the feasibility of a public-private partnership to convert the municipal parking lot on Central Avenue into affordable housing with commercial space and parking.
Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I mean, clearly, this is an underutilized lot. We're just using it for parking. Again, this could be utilized as affordable housing. More importantly, if you take a look at what was done at One Beach or what was done over on Waterfront Square through TND, this is something where the city, TND, and maybe another private developer could work to develop an affordable housing footprint there. More importantly, you could put the parking there. And like they do in Europe, you could have a commercial space that's on the first floor. There's so much that we could have done with that particular parcel that is basically being underutilized for parking and maintain parking there for the area. Thank you.
Anybody else on the motion? Zoning.
Calendar item number twenty-nine, motion presented by Counselor Rotundo that the city of Riviere provide public Wi-Fi at city-owned parks and squares utilizing ETP funds, online advertisers, and donations.
Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a way to get our children and people connected. More importantly, they do this in Boston, they do this in Cambridge, they do this in other communities. This is a very, very simple measure. It's a very cost-efficient measure. And more importantly, it can help our children learn at a greater speed. It gives them greater access. So, with that said, I think it's something worthwhile. We have, you know, free Wi-Fi here at City Hall as a guest. If you look at partners, they do the same thing. Most individual businesses do it. And I think this is something that we can look at as a provider.
Counselor Janino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to speak in favor of this. I think this is a great motion. During the pandemic, we really saw what broadband equity issues we have in the city. And I think, you know, some homes have it, some don't. And I think what we didn't see is how many kids didn't have Wi-Fi and didn't have the ability to do what they needed to do. You know, there were cases of kids that were hovering in front of schools or going to public places just to use Wi-Fi. So, I think this is a great motion, and it helps to just make the community have easier access to these things that really every student should have access to. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Anybody else? Ways and Means. Counselor Rotundo, you've got one more motion you're allowed. You've got more than is allowed on the calendar. Would you like to select one of the three?
Madam Clerk, I believe it. I sent in the five that, as I was requested, to amend accordingly.
There's number thirty remaining, number thirty-one, thirty-five. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Well, thirty is the one that I want.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Motion presented by Counselor Rotundo that the mayor request the superintendent of public schools, director of finance, city engineer, chief of planning and community development, the city planner, school committee man for anti, and a representative from Leftfield Group to provide an update on the new high school building project to include plans, potential location selection sites, cost of takings, and cost approximately $300 million.
Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you very much. To be quite honest with you, the general public, as I have spoken to them in quite detail, don't have a full understanding of what's taking place regarding the construction of a new high school, where it's going to be located at, how much it's going to be costing. There are several sites that they've kind of broken it down to right now. One of them is at the old high school site itself, which part of it has to do with costs, issues regarding to the MS- the state financing part of it. And more importantly, the other part of it is, as I spoke to you, Counselors Zambudo, about taking acreage from one little dog track and putting a high school there. The other part is placing it over at the Coolidge Street Projects, which would remove housing, hence the previous motion about utilizing municipal parking for the utilization of housing. This way, it gives this project, if they desire to go to the projects, the ability to build one set of affordable housing while placing a project of the nature of a high school at the projects on Cushman Ave, I believe, excuse me, Coolidge Street, as I believe it noted. There is a little website that shows the agenda and so forth, but it's not really fully pronounced to the general public. And this could cost upwards of $300 million. So that's a very large price tag. Or it could cost more, or it could cost a little less. But again, this is something that this body's going to have to vote on. But more importantly, it's going to affect our homeowners, our tenants, and more importantly, our children. And having had two children that have gone through Riviere High School and graduated, I have another daughter that potentially will be going there in the future. So for me, this is about our children and ensuring that we find the best place for our children. I don't want to be left out of this conversation because at the end of the day, what happens is, the building committee has their meeting, and they leave us out of the process, and we just sign off on it. And I don't particularly feel comfortable with that because I believe that we are part of this city, too. Thank you.
Counselor Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. President. To you, to Counselor Rotundo, as a member of that board, as well as Counselor Keefe, I assure you the City Council will not be left out of the loop here. And there are a lot of ongoing things. Nothing has been done definitively. No decisions have been made. We are just eliminating parcels and going through the feasibility study. And I agree with you. It is going to cost probably in excess of $300 million. But there are options, many options, that are on the table. And, you know, myself and Counselor Keefe are part of those discussions. And I understand your concerns as well. But we are part of that as well.
Yes, no?
Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Keefe.
Counselor, thank you, Mr. President. And to echo Counselor Visconti's comments, and I understand Counselor Rotundo's concern, absolutely. There's a reason I was asked to be on this committee while I was the president of the council last year. It was kind of an ask to have some representation from the council and also Counselor Visconti, considering he was helping run Ways and Means,[1770.28] considering he was helping run Ways and Means, having some financial background and being a former school committee member. But these are open to the public, so these meetings are not secretive. They're open to the public. We actually switched them from being earlier in the day. They were, I think, originally slated around 10:30, 11:00. We asked to have these meetings at 5:30. They're hosted on usually Thursdays at 5:30, and they're well-publicized. So I would definitely offer anyone that can come on, jump on. And of course, no decisions are going to be made without everyone's input. And there's definitely some concerns I have, but you're right, Counselor Rotundo, the price tag, there's no doubt. Any billing, any new school in the state of Massachusetts to service the amount of residents that we have in our city is going to easily cost $300 million, if not more. Thank you.
Mr. President, through you.
Go ahead. Counselor Rotundo.
When this process was starting, when former school superintendent Deacon was involved, I was a participant when Dr. Kelly was talking about site selection back then. In fact, it was at the high school, and we were in a roundtable, and we were speaking about those three sites. I can tell you that most parents do not know about what's going on. I can tell you that when you take a look at the YouTube channel that they have out there, that that's the case. But more importantly, the website that they have out there don't have a didaction of all the minutes and what's being stated and so forth. It would be nice if it would be publicized in the paper when the meetings are taking place, so that the public can see what's going on. And more importantly, that they are in an open forum, so that the public can actually go there, sit down, and do so. I'm a city councilor. I was informed by somebody else about this whole process. I have two children that graduated the high school, and I've got one that will potentially go there in the future. So clearly, as a city councilor, if I wasn't apprised of this, and I was at an event over at the Point of Pines recently, where I've had not more than 10, but multiple people beyond that come to me and ask me what's going on with the school building project. So this needs to be better advertised. I'm not saying that anybody is being left out, but it just needs to be more advertised.
Thank you. Let me just make a quick statement on this. I was on the building committee for five schools. I spent a tremendous amount of my time on the first two schools, the Susan B. Anthony and the Whelan. And I want to make a public statement here that I will oppose taking any piece of property off the tax rolls to build a school. So that excludes Wonderland. So that means that I will fight to the debt not to take Wonderland off the tax roll. I want to make the public statement that that's...
I agree.
I stand here before you. I'll fight to the debt for that. We don't need to... There are a couple of good locations in the mix, and I think that they both will work. But the Wonderland site is not coming off the tax rolls.
And, Mr. President, through you, so that the public knows exactly where to look for it, you can go on rivierehighschool.zenfolio.com, and I'm going to post this on my page, so that people can see it. But more importantly, I would like that, I should say, I would like the city to post this particular, and if you can focus in on it from Riviere TV, if you could actually post this on the city website, is what I was trying to say, so that the average public can see exactly what it is. They need to be able to see it. They need to be able to know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. And let me also just say that I'm very comfortable with Counselor Visconti and Counselor Keith on the building committee. I feel much better about that.
Absolutely.
Counselor Janino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wasn't going to speak on this, but since everyone else did. I just want to say, you know, I recently had the opportunity to tour the new high school, middle school complex that they built in Saugus, and to see the science labs, and to see the facilities, and to see the technology that that building has, and to know that the students in our city are still using the technology that I graduated with at Riviere High 11 years ago. And if you think about that, just in perspective, what does a laptop from 2010, when I graduated, look like versus today? What kind of technology is that building that was built in what the '70s or the '80s have that the schools of today have? I just think it's really going to be, you know, phenomenal to give our kids those resources and have those new tools. But it also really speaks a testament to our teachers and to our students that they've been able to excel and accomplish what they have been with the facilities and the tools that they do have. So I'm excited to see what's to come, and seeing the new Saugus High School really got me excited to see what Riviere High is going to have. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Powers, you got something?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to say right now publicly that I am definitely against the Wonderland site and its present condition, and I'll tell you why. We're inundated with traffic down there now. Can you imagine kids, parents trying to drive down there to get to that school?
I'm worried about that.
Wonderland, going through Bell Circle, et cetera? You're taking a valuable piece of property off of the tax rolls. And in my opinion, a high school should be centrally located in the city. It shouldn't be down at Wonderland or up in North River here, or wherever the, you know. It should be central, so that all of the children in the city can get to that school easily. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar 31 will be held over. Calendar item number 32 has been withdrawn. Calendar item number 33, motion presented by Counselor McKenna that the mayor be requested to proceed with the taking of McMackin Field by eminent domain in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter 79.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know if Riviere TV has the pitches that I submitted. Yes, okay. So as most of you know, I have a team of scientists from Tufts and Boston University at my house that are conducting a study on air quality of the pollution of planes flying overhead in Beauchamp. In addition to this, I spoke to one of the scientists and forwarded the pitches I took of the baseball field. They forwarded them to the infection disease specialist at Tufts University, and these specialists will get permission to enter McMackin Field and take samples of the still water. Not only are the gatekeepers of this property inhibiting the usage of this field from our youth, but now, by not addressing the major issues in this field, they could be jeopardizing the health of a surrounding community by the dormant waters, the mosquitoes, and the mosquitoes that lie in the park. The field hasn't been used for more than 10 years. I know it can, I know it is, can be, I'm sorry, I know it is, I don't know, trying to take this field by eminent, I know it's going to be years in court by trying to take this field by eminent domain. But with the unsafe water lurking in the field, mosquitoes, the overgrown weeds, and the neglect of this park, and the unwillingness of the gatekeepers to come to the table to negotiate a solution with the city, I believe the city has a good case. Thank you.
Counselor Visconti.
I want to commend my colleague with this motion, and I agree wholeheartedly. I think it's long overdue that that area and that park has not been taken care of. It was left in complete disarray. There are, it's filled with bugs and ticks. God only knows what's coming out of that park right now, which is affecting the neighbors around the area. So whatever we have to do to take back that park, it's a shame that it's gone to that degree. It really is. That park was once known as Little Fenway. It was a great field. Unfortunately, it's gone, really just gone down the tubes. And I think it's long overdue that we take this field back and make it something that we can utilize in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Keith.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, again, I don't go on social media and create controversy. You know, obviously, I think everyone knows me. I don't like to slander people and point fingers and whatnot. But, you know, we constantly, the city constantly gets the blame for this property. And I have to repeat, I'm talking to people from all over the state, people that grew up in Riviere that live in other states, oh, the city's not taking care of this property. What's going on with this field? I remember playing in this field when I was a kid. It's not our property. I wish it was. And we've offered a number of times to sit down. We've offered, I've put in motions to have, with Counselor McKenna, to have them come, the board, come before us, tell us what they need to do to help. You know, they've talked about wanting to speak to the mayor, going back, multiple administrations on how they can correct and fix this problem. There's four board members on the books. You can look it up. Anyone can look it up. Paul Nichols, who I believe moved out of the city, doesn't even, lives up in Salem. I'm not sure he really even wants to be affiliated. I've talked to him. He said, "I really don't even want to be affiliated, but I don't know what the issue is." Kyle Rosa, he's a businessperson. He owns a printing company. Richmond Asian, I think we all know who Rich is, son played baseball. And there's another gentleman, Rich Damiano. Come to the council meeting. We're not going to, you know, let's work on a solution together. I don't know why there's nothing being answered. I don't understand. But I've talked to Bob Mar, the property's being fined. We got to work on this solution together. And enough's enough. Stop hiding. Stop talking in circles. Let's sit down. Let's do it in a public forum, and we'll get this issue corralled. But that property is meant for recreational space. It's meant for kids to be using it. It's not meant to be wasteland. Simple as that. And that's what it is. And it's been like that for way too long.
Counselor Janino.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Looking good up there, if I may say so myself. It's been a long night. No, this property makes me sick. I mean, this has been an issue. I've been on the council now for 10 years, and since I've been up here, it started to fall into disrepair at the beginning of my term. And I've slowly watched a beautiful property that kids could use, one of the few green spaces we have in this city, just fall into complete disrepair. You know, the reality is, the site requires hundreds of thousands of dollars in drainage work that needs to be done. It's really expensive undertaking. But quite frankly, if the city was fining this property appropriately, I believe the cost and accrued fines would be more than the value of the property at this point, because it's been in disrepair for so many years. And if that's the case, you know, we should take legal action, get the property back. And I think the city is willing to invest the money to fix it. I think the city wants to fix it. And, you know, if we have the resources and we can put it in our capital improvement plans, there's funding right now to make big water and sewer infrastructure changes that are needed, like for this property. So I think we really need to take advantage of it and just get the property back, because it's a disgrace. Thank you.
Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you. Quite frankly, you know, I have spoken about this months ago, probably years ago, as Counselor Keith has spoken about. Both the Rizzo and Arigo administration has worked with Riviere Little League in order to facilitate this. More importantly, as I had spoken about before, and thankfully, Counselor McKenna is taking this by the horns, the property needs to be taken by eminent domain. More importantly, I believe, by law, because it is a blighted property, we have the ability to do it without going through a rigorous legal standard. My understanding is that I think we should probably also have the state auditor audit Riviere Little League at this point and find out what is going on with the finances of it. When I looked at the LLC on the corporate database at the Secretary of State's, their filings are noted. But I believe that we need to ask the state to investigate what's going on with the money that is being held in escrow and so forth, not casting dispersions. But if you're going to allow that water to sit there and create what could potentially be an area where West Nile virus and other vectors can be placed right next door to an apartment complex where many seniors live, that is a very, very big problem. If this was a building on Broadway that had broken windows and was dilapidated, we would have taken it by eminent domain under the, I believe it's Fodiah, or whatever the blighted law is, already. We find them. We need to get the city to now act on it. Time is wasted. Guy Mealy is probably rolling over in his grave over this. And more importantly, we should do a title search on the property and find out how it was bequeathed to Riviere Little League. And if they're not in compliance with that, we might be able to return it back to the city without much legal issue. Thank you.
If there are no further questions, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 34, motion presented by Counselor Sereno that the mayor or appropriate department be requested to communicate to Amazon that it is expected that their delivery drivers follow the rules of the road and obey local traffic ordinances.
Counselor Sereno. Thank you, Mr. President. It pretty much speaks for itself, but as many residents in the city know, our city is kind of getting overrun with Amazon delivery trucks. And oftentimes, these delivery drivers are kind of not so courteous. They double park, they blare their music as they're coming down our streets. I was sitting in my backyard a few weeks ago, and I heard kind of like a boombox almost, and I went outside. I thought it was one of my neighbors with their cars, and it was an Amazon delivery driver. So that's just kind of a mundane example. But the double parking, going down one-way streets the wrong way. So if we can communicate to the company, especially with one warehouse and another one coming in the city, I think that would be best to try to alleviate some of this. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody else? Counselor Rotundo.
I full-heartedly support Counselor Sereno on this motion. More importantly, people have to understand, in the future, we're going to see them having automated vehicles delivering, as they do in other parts of the country and the world. So we have to think of a way to handle that issue, too.
Thank you. Anybody else? On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 35 is put on hold. Calendar item number 36, motion presented by Counselors Keith, Morabito, and Visconti that the city council award a certificate of commendation to Kayla and Jordan Martelli for holding their 10th annual Alex's Lemonade Stand to raise funds for childhood cancer research and treatment. To date, the Martellis have raised over $50,000 through their fundraiser.
Counselor Keith.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sure I speak for my fellow counselors, Visconti and Counselor Morabito. We attend this event every year. It's pretty much, we enjoy it more than most. But I know the entire city council likes to celebrate, and of course, a lot of members of the city. But we'll probably save our remarks for the night of the event. But it was just telling that multiple, many of us wanted to submit this motion, so it was a group motion. I recognize these great young ladies. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Everybody else, all set?
I'll save my comments for that night.
Okay, great. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 37, motion presented by Counselor Keith that the following ordinance amendment be ordered to a public hearing, an ordinance amending metered rates of the revised ordinances of the City of Riviere.
Counselor Keith.
I know this is an ordinance change, so it'll go to further planning or further meetings. There was one miscalculation. Instead of compromised of not more than four units, it's intended to be not more than six units. And just, a lot of residents, and I'm sure all the councils have received this recently, some small multifamilies, we're not talking about 50 units, we're not talking about 30 units, we're talking about fours and sixes. A lot of these are owner, we're talking about owner-occupied, people that live on your street, and this isn't necessarily commercial use. Their water rates, all of a sudden, in the last year or two, or even in the last few weeks, is there's some sort of catch-up happening, which I understand, and I'm happy that the city's trying to do the right thing. They're being charged double for their water, because the commercial water rate is pretty much double. And there's not that many that are affected, but I think that these owner-occupied homeowners should be charged for residential water rates, because it's a residential use. Obviously, these larger commercial buildings, they should be paying the commercial rate. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you. So by doing so, by making it owner-occupied, I'll give you an example on how you can get away with this. Let's say my daughter, let's say I own a six family, and now my daughter lives there, but I vote out of that property, because I live down in Florida, but I claim my residency here. but I claim my residency here. They can basically skirt that issue. Meanwhile, thousands, and I mean thousands, of people are going to be charged the commercial rate because they're not owner-occupied. We are now charging residential, people that rent, seniors are most vulnerable, 55 and older, veterans. We are now charging them the commercial rate instead of the residential rate. And in fact, I went down to the assessor's office and pulled up pretty much all the apartments that would be affected by it, just seven pages here. More importantly, as it's coded, four to eight, the assessor's office, I believe, said that there is 358 properties of this nature. And this means people on Ocean Avenue, Riviera Beach Boulevard, that are not on a condo association, as it reads, the actual section. By adding that owner-occupied as an exemption, every other person who lives in this city is basically being charged a commercial rate, a higher rate, from a combined rate of .03 versus .02, which is greatly impacting people. In fact, my neighbor, Masood, who's an immigrant from Iran, sent me his particular bill. And it was from Ms. O'Hara, showing that because he lives in a building that is considered commercial, paid $280 for two months. Now, this is for him, his wife, and his son, Ryan. And this means that every person that rents in the city, at Romney Flats, at Ocean Avenue, on Riviera Beach Boulevard, at the new buildings, that are singularly needed underneath the ordinance created in 2008, are going to be affected. So when you put in owner-occupied, six units are owner-occupied, the issue isn't the units as much as it is the owner-occupied. What the issue is, is that you now exclude the renter who represents well over 10,000 people in this city who are being charged possibly the commercial rate, depending if their building is meeded or not. We have meeded over on Ocean Avenue. We have them meeded on Riviera Beach Boulevard, in the new buildings, at Romney Flats. They are meeded at the building that I live at. We are meeded. I just paid my bill of $378. So I am telling you that if you are a renter, by doing this, you are screwing, excuse my language, the people that rent. That means our seniors that rent in these buildings. That means our veterans that rent in these buildings. So if we're gonna do it for the owner-occupier who can skirt the system if they wish, and basically, who's also being affected, I agree with you, Patrick. These people are being affected. But if we're gonna do it for the owner-occupier, why not for everybody?
Counsel Zambudot, may I throw you to Counsel Rotundo?
Counsel Keith, go ahead.
Just some adification. I'm trying to help here. And I get, and I think, I just want to make sure that we understand that I'm trying to help the little guy. I'm not trying to screw the renter by any stretch of the imagination. But I do believe, and you know, quite frankly, I do want to give some leeway to the owner-occupants in our city. I want to incentivize people to live in our city to own and to establish roots in our city as homeownership pathways, or something that's really important to us. We offer owner-occupant tax credits on many, many, many different things. This would be, this would fall very much in line. And I also don't agree, and this isn't anything against, we have these large builders that do come up, those large commercial, commercial developers, that's what they are, they, I mean, unfortunately, they should be charged the commercial rate. And if that means that it has to impact what they can charge for rent, then it should. But if we don't, then the independent homeowner will actually be affected. The little lady that lives on Rand Street, that's been living there since she's seven, her water rates will change because ultimately, someone has to pay for the water, right? So this is, I'm just trying to help out the little, the little guy right now. And yes, I agree. If we have to revisit and review the larger-scale properties, I think that that would be something that would be separate.
Through you, Mr. President. This does not affect the average homeowner. This affects the renter. And in fact, at this point, the commercial, the commercial aspect of it is that they're paying a higher rate. That's all there is to it.
Timeout here. Here's what we're gonna, Counsel Masconti, you got something?
No.
Go ahead, he's out.
I mean, the economics are pretty clear. I mean, whether you-
This is going to committee anyways. Probably going to a joint committee of ways and means and zoning. But there's too much confusion here.
I'll, because I'll reserve my comments. Through you, Mr. President. There are less than 150 people that are six units and under.
I guess my concern is, with this type of motion, is that the six-unit buildings in the lending world are commercial. Are commercial properties. Okay? They're considered commercial. So I guess one to four are residential. And anything above that is considered commercial. I don't know how they're being taxed. Are they being taxed on a commercial rate as well? I would assume they are, since they are commercial. I don't have that answer. But in the lending world, anything above four units are considered commercial properties. So, but I'll reserve my comments to the subcommittee.
Yeah, I'm comfortable sending this to committee because I'm not sending it to a public hearing until we work it out. Okay, zoning and ways and me-
Is this an ordinance? Is this a new ordinance? An ordinance change?
Yeah, it will be.
So wouldn't it be, wouldn't it go to Legislative Affairs?
It's more a zoning issue than anything else.
What zoning change is being made?
We're changing the zoning regulation regarding to the meters.
No, that's unacceptable. Good answer, but unacceptable.
I still love you, Stephen.
Zoning and ways and means.
Calendar item number 39, motion presented by Counsel McKenna that the mayor request the DPW to widen a section of Bellingham Avenue from number two to number 178. In order for the city to comply with ADA laws, sidewalk parking on Bellingham Avenue was prohibited. And therefore, during the recent fire in Beauchamp, fire apparatuses could not maneuver down Bellingham Avenue due to the new curb-to-curb parking. In addition, residents parked along this section of Bellingham Avenue frequently experienced car damage because of how narrow this section is.
Counsel McKenna.
Thank you. So I'm asking the city to shorten the sidewalks. And I have a couple of reasons why. First of all, Bellingham Ave is probably one of the narrowest streets in Revere, with two-sided parking, curb-to-curb because of the new ADA law. Before, they were parking on the sidewalk. Now they can't park on the sidewalk anymore because they get ticketed. The sidewalk, I measured it myself, and it's eight feet on the right-hand side of the street, eight feet wide. For wheelchair access, a wheelchair needs between 32 and 36 inches for clearance on that sidewalk. Because of the tight fit, fire apparatuses couldn't get down this street during the Endicott Fire. And residents had to move their cars so they could address three houses on Bellingham Ave that were on fire. Residents' cars are being hit daily, and mirrors are being taken off. Something really needs to be done. It's a very short roadway. And I'm just asking for the tightest spots to be done, to shorten the sidewalk. And I'm just asking the city to shorten the sidewalks on one side of the street for the safety of the residents that live in this densely populated section of Beauchamp. The shortening of the sidewalks will also help in response times if needed. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody else on this?
Jessica.
Yes. Counsel Janino.
Thank you. I just want to support my colleague, Counselor McKenna, on this motion. You know, it's so important that we respect both issues with this, right? We need to make sure we're ADA compliant and that we're making things accessible for our handicapped community. But at no cost should that become a fire hazard. And we saw that firsthand when his Counselor McKenna mentioned three buildings actually did catch on fire. So it's my hope that we get this resolved. And we also, you know, take into account any other areas in the city that might have happened. I do feel that, especially in Beauchamp, there is some level of disproportion in terms of the sidewalks. You have some neighborhoods where there are no sidewalks and no curbage. Then you have some neighborhoods where there are these ginormous sidewalks that are several feet wide that really don't have a purpose. So I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Anybody else? On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 40, motion presented by Counsel McKenna that the mayor request the Traffic Commission to designate four 24-hour resident-only parking spaces in the Central Avenue municipal lot for the residents of Acela Court and Central Avenue Rear. The Traffic Commission overlooked the residents living on these streets when metered parking was established in the Central Avenue municipal parking lot.
Counsel McKenna.
I'll be brief. Residents have driveways and entranceways going into the Central Ave parking, municipal parking lot. There are two streets in that parking lot, Acela Court and Central Ave Rear. These residents park in the lot that abuts their houses. And all I'm asking is, before they put the meters in, that they give at least four spaces to these residents that have streets in this parking lot. And also signage, too, that, you know, no one else parks there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on this? On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 41, motion presented by Counselor Serino that the mayor instruct National Grid to install street lamps on Poles 3960, 3960 and 1/2, and 3961 on Salem Street and North Revere before Sully's Curve opposite the entrance to Overlook Bridge. At night, particularly in bad weather, this stretch of roadway is dark and poses a safety issue.
Counsel Serino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did speak on this earlier, so I would just add, if I could amend the motion, to add the sentence that says, "The lamps shall be 96 watts." Dan had just asked me to amend that and put that in there. So just make sure we have the wattage, and we're good. Thank you.
Anybody else? On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 42, motion presented by Counselor Powers that the mayor direct the DPW to repair the seawall in front of 131 Rice Avenue. Further, that an assessment of the entire wall be made to detect any other portions of the wall that may be deteriorating. Further, that the city solicitor and city engineer make a determination as to who is responsible for maintaining the wall.
Counsel Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. There is a, for lack of a better word, a breach currently in the seawall in front of 131 Rice Avenue. A major storm would come right over and maybe even eliminate part of that wall that's there. That's the first thing that needs to be done. DPW has to get down there, frame it, repour it, and give the people on that end of Rice Avenue some protection. The second thing that has to be done is there has to be an assessment as to what other portions of the wall need to be repaired. And there are some. And I know there are some down around the end of the wall, down near Goodwin and Harrington, and those areas down there. And they need to be repaired. And I'm sure there are others. So that has to be looked at very carefully because all that's happening is, the more water storms we have, et cetera, it deteriorates more. And the other thing, too, is that the city engineer and the city solicitor have to get together and make a determination as to who owns that wall. Is it the City of Revere, or is it the Army Corps of Engineers? Once we determine who owns it, then those repairs have to be made, and the wall has to be maintained every other day. You can't have a wall that's falling apart when you have residents living on the other side of that wall down there. It's not a good thing. And if we don't do that, we're not protecting the residents down there from flooding. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody else? Counsel Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Frankly, this is a huge issue for the area. I fully support Counsel Powers on it. Moreover, I'll be asking in the near future that we start looking at coastal resiliency projects within our community. This is a major issue that our community faces as we have rising ties due to climate change. We have to address this issue accordingly. And I believe the Army Corps of Engineers has a plan, as well as Boston. So I fully support Counsel Powers on this measure.
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody else? On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 43, motion presented by Counselor Novoselfsky that the mayor direct DCR Traffic Engineering to redesign the intersection of Riviera Beach Parkway and Campbell Avenue to change the contour, to restrict the turning of traffic onto Campbell Avenue from Riviera Beach Parkway, and reduce the length of the crosswalk across Campbell Avenue for the safety of pedestrians.
Counsel Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, over the past two years, the amount of traffic on the Riviera Beach Parkway, North Shore Road, has increased. So people are looking for shortcuts. And the shortcuts include going up wrong way, wrong way on many streets. And Riviera Beach Parkway going onto Campbell Ave at one time, used to be a two-way street. So the radius at that particular location is made for people to take the right-hand turn coming off the Parkway going up the wrong way. So what we're asking is to try and mitigate the amount of traffic moving up there and extend that radius out into Campbell Ave and Riviera Beach Parkway. And that would also reduce the length of the crosswalk, which seems to be a guide for the state right now to reduce the length of crosswalks for people. So we're asking the, this is DCR property. And I was referred to the traffic engineering of DCR to get this done. Thank you.
Anybody else? On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 44, motion presented by Counselor Novoselfsky that the mayor direct DCR Traffic Engineering to redesign the intersection of Riviera Beach Parkway and Hillside Avenue to change the configuration, reduce the length of the crosswalk across Hillside Avenue for the safety of pedestrians, and paint the appropriate crosswalk.
Counsel Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, people know Hillside Ave by the Route 1A overpass. Hillside Ave is extra wide, and the sidewalk is extra short. Way back when, there used to be a driveway there. And now we would like to have DCR reconfigure, extend the sidewalk, and shorten the crosswalk again for pedestrians being able to cross safely. Thank you.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 45, motion presented by Councillor Novoselfsky that the mayor request DCR to provide a copy of the DCR master plan for Riviera Beach Boulevard and the length of Ocean Avenue from Riviera Street to Riviera Beach Parkway.
Councillor Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I know DCR has a master plan, but it dates back to 2020, and in the plan, when you go online to look at it, it says that they were going to fix the pedestrian crossing at State Road and Riviera Beach Parkway and Ocean Ave. But the people were supposed to be involved in the design of this, and there was never any, any advertisement of meetings for the public. It was designed by, unfortunately, someone that lives near there, and they wanted pedestrian crossing, but then the developers got involved, and DCR got back involved, and then the city got involved, and now that area is a total mess. You know, you have 18-foot sidewalks with a bike lane on a sidewalk, and you have 22-foot lanes which fire engines can barely get down, and unfortunately, it's in Councillor McKenna's ward, but it affects my ward, because the traffic is back beyond BK's on Shirley Ave at times, and it's a disaster. And I just think that DCR should look at that again, come back, do a tweaking of the roadway and the sidewalk, and also to update their master plan, and give people a chance to know what's going on without shoving things down their throat. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with Councillor Novoselfsky, and I think that Councillor Novoselfsky and I did not have any input on the sidewalk at all. So it was done without our knowledge, and then once it was done, I had a lot of people say, "Were you involved in this?" And I said, "No, I had no idea." So it was done without our knowledge. I think we should have had input in it, and that's, I really do agree with Councillor Novoselfsky. Thank you.
Thank you. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Late motion presented by Councillor Serino that the mayor and City of Riviera host an official community memorial event in commemoration of the 20th anniversary of the attacks of September 11th, 2001, on Saturday, September 11th, 2021.
Councillor Serino.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I just want to say that I know that typically, the city does have a little bit of an event, usually at the fire station, with the fire department, the police department, and the elected officials, but where, this is the 20th anniversary of September 11th, I think we should put a little more effort, not saying that there is an effort in the previous year's ones, but put a little more community emphasis and get more of the community involved. So especially where 9/11 is on a Saturday, and it's a weekend, so maybe we can plan an event and memorial. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. Anybody else? On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered. There's no further business, so the City Council will stand adjourned till September 13th.